Now, what do you say was that a wrong?
All right, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors. Can I have a roll call, please?
Do you have a question?
Here.
Director Hunt?
Here.
President Corolla?
Here.
Vice President Benson?
Here. Okay, it looks like we're all here. Public participation. Individuals be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. So, the new business we have on our, this little short special meeting is the, in regards to the article that came out, I believe on Saturday in the Paradise Post, I think numerous people that I know, Director Hunt and myself, feel there are numerous errors in there. If this is an editorial by the staff of the Post, it has some dramatically conflicting things going on in there conflicting to their own articles. So, I don't know where the information was gathered from, but I think Director Hunt might have a few words that he wants to say on it, and then we're gonna talk about maybe what we are gonna do as a response for this article.
Well, the Board of Directors probably read the article. Are we all up to date on what that said?
If not, you have a copy on.
Said that there was an illegal ad hoc meeting held by, with President Corolla and myself in regard.
Did it call it illegal?
When you have an ad hoc meeting to let out a contract, by definition it has to be illegal. I don't know if they called it illegal or not.
Yeah, I don't think they called it illegal.
But it is, but that's what they're insinuating. And I'm pretty upset about the libelous nature of that article that was an editorial that came out in the Post. I did not receive a phone call from the Post asking me to verify whether those facts were true. Sep, did you get a phone call from the Post asking you to verify?
I did not.
George or staff members, did anybody there receive a phone call from the Post asking them to verify that the ad hoc committee that was for the salary negotiation team met to let a contract for construction of the corporate facility?
No.
Dustin, did Legal get a call from the Post in regard? Okay.
I think what they meant to say was that we had a building committee, and that's the one they were talking about before. I think that's what they, I think they got mixed up on it.
They said what they said.
We weren't on that together.
Yeah, but I think somebody said that you were on the building committee. You were.
He was.
I myself said that.
I was never on it. Bill was on it.
And I think that's where they picked it up from.
Yeah, but the committee hasn't met for over, what, a year and a half?
Yeah, right.
Bill and I were on that committee.
I think that's where they got that information, though. I think you said something, you were on a, you didn't say ad hoc, I don't think it was ad hoc.
We were on the building.
Of course it was not ad hoc. It couldn't be.
The corporate yard building committee.
I think that's where they came up with it.
So, you know, this is an editorial in the Paradise Post. It doesn't say who the editor is that pinned their name to it. Would you have any information for us on that, Trevor? Would you know who wrote the article?
I don't, and also just, I cannot, I can't comment during a public session. I'm here to observe and write and report. I can definitely talk to you afterwards, I can talk to you afterwards, but I can't, I can't be a part of the photo process.
We would like for you to be. But that's where we are. And something like this, put in the paper in these hot times when people are purposefully leaking stories to the Post, misrepresentations, half-truths, this comes out, nobody's gonna remember that it was the wrong information, nobody's gonna remember if the Paradise Post publishes a, two, one column by three-quarter inch retraction stating that they made a mistake and there never was an ad hoc committee that met in regard to the Miller Glass window contract, that Sep and I were on this ad hoc committee. Nobody's ever gonna remember that. They're just gonna remember that this was something that besmirched the reputation of a director on the board, and maybe next time when they go to vote, they're gonna remember it then, and what are they gonna remember? They're gonna, oh yeah, there were those illegal things that Paradise Irrigation District was doing. We don't want those guys back in there. And that's what really upsets me about the tone of that article, is that it was just flagrantly put out there without verification of facts. And I would like to know if there's anything that the Paradise Irrigation District can do to help undo the harm that the Post has caused to the directors. And I don't know, I have, with my business schedule, I haven't had an opportunity to contact the only attorney that I know, other than PID's attorney, and ask him if there's a, an action that I can personally take in regard to the damages for libel, and ask the Post to retract the story. But, you know, and I was one of the people that talked to Sep, and I said, I really think we should bring this up in a public meeting since we're all so big on transparency, and say, what happened here? If we're all so big on transparency, then where are these phone calls that are coming in to verify the facts before they get printed in a newspaper?
I noticed in the, on the page, the other two articles that are on that page, they have an author, but the one about the PID has no author on it. So, was that a direct attempt not to?
Well, it's generally the editorial staff, someone on the editorial staff.
Well, that's eight people, so which one of the eight has the responsibility of this? Or do we just put it on the Post?
As I understand it.
I know, I know the owner of my business is not very happy about it. I know I'm not very happy about it. Like Ken said, this could affect future elections. My employment with my primary employer has been affected by this. It's just not right that people can write articles like this, and this is just one bad, one bad fact after another.
Seth, one thing you should know for sure, nobody contacted me, I didn't even know this thing existed, I didn't get the Post until I was sent a copy of it the other day with the agenda. So, I have no knowledge of any of this and where it came from.
I don't think this came from you, Bill. This clearly has a different pin on it, but it's still not okay, and I'm with Ken in that I wanna know what district we can do.
Well, the idea came from somewhere. I'm in a, and I do home loans, I'm in the financial industry. I have to protect my client's personal information. I'm required by law to keep it under lock and key, to protect it, to password code my emails and information that I send out. If my client base thinks that they can't trust me to do something, or thinks I'm doing something underhanded here for the PID, then how quickly am I going to lose their trust in me handling their private detailed business? And that's what I said, you know, that's how I make my living, it's all commission-based. If I lose the trust of my clientele because of some poorly-written article, or purposefully poorly-written article, I don't know which way to go now, I'm just pretty upset about it, then there's going to have to be consequences for that. I don't know how I'd ever prove it, but it's not right. And at the very least, I believe that the Paradise Irrigation District, in an attempt to protect the reputation of both Miller Glass, all three of us, Miller Glass as a company, Sep Corolla as an individual, and myself as an individual, should demand a retraction from the Paradise Post and print an article equally as large, so stating that there were gross misrepresentations there.
Could you be specific about the misrepresentations you wanna call them on?
Well, Bill, did you read the article?
Yeah, I read the article, but I'm this guy that always asks for specifics. I think you've gotten used to that a little bit.
Well, we could probably just...
Anyway.
Well, in the very second line, it says that the district put out a bid, the contract to put the glass in the corporate yard, and an ad hoc committee was formed to do that. Did we do that?
No, I'm not aware of any ad hoc committee doing that.
Me either, and I've been the one that informed that, or Ken would have formed that, so no, I'm not. The committee including, included Sep Corolla and Ken Hunt, and they selected the lowest bid of fifteen ninety-three from Miller Glass. Did we do that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, me either, yeah.
Instead of just saying, not that I'm aware of, George, let's hear from staff, or Jim Ladreni, or whoever let this contract out.
Yeah.
Were we involved in approving the contract? Did we see it? Did we meet about it? Did we have any say in it? Did we even know it was going on?
No committee at PID is ever involved in the letting out of a contract, period.
Nor is any committee at PID ever involved in the selection of the low bidder, period.
The only thing remotely close is we may have a committee that will review proposals that staff has let the bid out for, like we did with the employee retirement.
Uh huh.
And you assisted, a committees assisted us in narrowing it down to two vendors.
But...
But never will a committee approve anything in this district, be it a contract, be it a policy, be it a proposal, that there's never any power a committee has to take any action.
For clarification, did you approve that bid? Or was that Jim Ladreni's decision?
That was Jim Ladreni. When we're in, we're building a project, we got stuff flying, you know, ordering right and left. I will ultimately approve it, but when it goes out to bid, him and his people put it out to bid. You get a minimum of three bids, and when those bids come in, if they all meet specs, the lowest bidder is selected. The only time I would personally jump ahead and approve it is if they came to me and said, look, this is, you know, the low bid's five dollars lower, yet the product is not as good. And then we would work that out. That hardly ever happens, that's the way it works. So, in this case, the windows went out to bid, and they got all three bids back, Jim reviewed the bids, and notified Miller Glass they were the low bidder.
Okay, so, Bill, we could go on. Basically, each line has something in it that is incorrect. There's only a couple, few short sentences that might have some completely 100% true in there, but if you read through it, it's just one line after another. So, if you want me to continue, I will, but we can answer these questions, or go through these lines one by one, and I'll ask the board if that was true.
Well, if you're gonna make a motion to do something, it would be interesting to know specifically what the motion's about as far as the content and the editorial, rather than just saying editorial's out of whack. Well, that's broad brush, it takes in what's true and not. I was just saying, if you're gonna make a motion to have the district write a letter or do anything like that to the Post, you need to be, I would say, specific in the letter.
I don't know how Ken feels, but at this point, I would say pretty much from the first word to the last word would pretty much be what I would wanna see retracted, because, like I said, just about every sentence has something wrong in it.
I think we could make a motion to direct staff to correct it, and then send it to the Post, and ask for them to print it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Now, what we're going to do is we're gonna ask staff to write a letter addressing some of the inaccuracies of this article.
Exactly.
Good. That's the intent of the motion. I have something on contracts, though, that I was gonna ask George. I understand staff looking and reviewing the third ones, and you approving that it's done in the proper fashion, that's somewhat the concern about, what these people are all concerned about on that. But wouldn't that officially go by the board that you let the contract out for even fifteen-hundred dollars worth of windows?
No.
Wouldn't it?
The check.
Most boards, yeah, the checks and this type of thing.
That's what we have...
Most boards that I've sat on, that would go by the board, that you did this, so we would know what you're doing, without looking at the checks.
Well, the board, just to clarify, the board approved a budget for the purchase of materials for work on that building, so...
I understand that, but I...
Our procurement policy allows us to spend five thousand.
I understand that, but so that we know what's going on, we should have an itemized thing, the bid you let out.
Let's see it again.
So, we as a board knows what's going on, even though we authorize you to do it. And it would be just, you know...
If that's the pleasure of the board, that will be...
Well, we'll talk about that another time.
A hundred pages thick.
No, it won't need to be a hundred pages thick. And that's one of the things that we did put out after we had that special meeting, that we would be reviewing these procedures, if you remember correctly, so they won't have that again. I don't have that in front of me, but Dustin will be right for that. And we did that in closed session, and we came out and told these people what we were doing. So, we need to go review it. When I read this on Saturday morning, and I get the Post, and I enjoy the Post as a matter of fact, I saw several inaccuracies in here, but it didn't ring a bell on me on the ad hoc committee, because that was before my time being officially on here. But we really need to review some of this to keep us all out of hot water, which we're in now, with these people out here. That's another day.
Well, I don't think we're in hot water with these people out here, because we didn't do anything wrong.
I realize that.
The other thing is that this just looks to me like it was a witch hunt against George, so they could bring up something here that they said was wrong that we were doing, and then complain that George didn't fix it. Who's gonna remember that George was unjustly accused of not fixing something that didn't happen? It's not. It's just a, as far as I'm concerned, it's just a completely libelous article that needs to be addressed by the Post.
That's what I meant about being in hot water, precisely that. That's how these things happen, when you get in hot water.
I don't know what your hot water analogy is about.
I'd like to comment...
I'm trying to think of an example of it right here.
On the article, Larry borrowed it, so see, the only thing I can find that's completely out of whack is the district put out the bid, the contract to put the glass in the corporate yard, and the ad hoc committee was formed to do that. The committee included Seth Corolla and Ken Hunt, and they were selected the lowest bid from fifteen ninety-three from Miller Glass. And then I would say that's what we had, that's it to complain about. Almost everything else in here has been mentioned in the meeting that we had concerning this, and I don't see anything else, they maybe stretched some of the stuff, but basically it's, they're, see, an editorial is an opinion thing. And as far as I know, having had some experience with this things in the Post on my own part, is that there's nothing, if you're an elected official or appointed official, you just have to stand and take it, as far as I know. I don't think there's anything you can do about this Post.
You can, if there are libelous lies written, then the Post can be held liable for that.
Okay, well, then I would say it's the one line that's to the second line in the thing, and...
And what about what George, not fixing it?
I'm gonna advise you to probably maybe read the article again, and see if you pick up, see if you pick up on a couple of other things that are in there, 'cause I see more than just the first line in there. So, let's take a roll call vote. George, any want to read the motion back again?
Motion by Director Duncan to direct staff to write a letter addressing some of the inaccurateness and letter, seconded by Director Hunt.
Does everybody understand that? Are we all good?
There was too much noise, I didn't hear it. Would you read it again?
Motion by Director Duncan to direct staff to write a letter to the Paradise Post addressing some of the inaccuracies of the editorial.
All of it, all of the inaccurate...
Oh, not some of them, yeah.
All of the inaccuracies.
Seconded by Director Hunt.
Okay, was that, then I move to amend the motion to demand that the Paradise Irrigation District demand a retraction be printed by the Post once they determine that the, those items are inaccurate.
I'll second the amended.
Okay, so, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And...
I'll abstain.
And Bill will abstain. It's four ayes and one abstain on the amendment, and on the motion itself. George?
You didn't, I don't believe you gave the public an opportunity to comment before a vote.
I'm sorry, I, very good, very good, thank you, thank you. John, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to... I was on a board very similar to this for a community service district.
You should announce who you are.
I'm John Remilia, resident of Paradise. And it was, it was challenging to make sure that we dotted our Ts, crossed our, or dotted our Is, crossed our Ts. But one thing that I've got a question is, in an editorial, and this may be the attorney to answer this, an editorial is an opinion. If this newspaper was liable for an editorial story, as far as I'm concerned, Jamie O'Neil would be getting them sued on a monthly basis. If it was a news story versus an editorial story, I mean, an editorial to me is an opinion, and, you know, is there a difference there? I don't wanna see the district jump out in, you know, an editorial's an editorial, but a news story's a news story. If this, and I, I didn't even get a chance to look at the agenda, I just came from work and, is what, but it sounded like it was an editorial, and in editorial, there's a freedom of speech thing, where a news story, there's a factual belief in it. So, I mean, that's a question, before the district jumps out and starts, you know, making allegations and stuff, do you need to find, you know, is there, is there a different standard for an editorial versus a news story? Thank you.
After they, if there's no more of those there, I'd like to...
Good evening, Board, thank you for allowing us this time. I was at a meeting this morning where our speaker was emphasizing behavior and attitude, especially in regards to the people that were around or groups that we associate with. I thought that was especially meaningful considering what we're discussing tonight. Here's what I know, PID is dedicated to the business of producing and delivering a safe, dependable supply of quality water in an efficient and cost-effective manner, with service that meets or exceeds the expectation of our customers. I think everybody in this room is probably a customer and a ratepayer, so that affects us, the cost-effective manner. Last Monday, last Tuesday, at the Paradise Town Council meeting, Attorney Moore made a very specific statement, that when a public entity goes out to bid, there are three bids you must, by California law, accept the lowest bid. That's what Attorney Moore said. Now, maybe Dustin's got a different opinion on that, but I heard him say that word for word, because it was a very specific item that was being discussed at the time. Now, I have to wonder, if we're considering, you are the public persona of PID to us, the Post is not, please guard your words very carefully, whether in writing or spoken.
Thank you, Ward. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to this issue?
Hi, guys, it's me again. I was here at the last meeting, and I could've sworn I heard your attorney say that what happened with the Miller Glass thing was an absolute conflict of interest. And then I learned that you do have a little class, I think all the board members have to go to, that educates you about the Brown Act and what you should and shouldn't do, and so every one of you should already know the rules, especially George, he must've heard him year after year after year. And so there really isn't an excuse to even have a hint of a conflict of interest, even if it's about your neighbor's property next door, you should recuse yourself and step away so there's no, no problem. I was glad that the Paradise Post wrote an article. I certainly didn't call them about the article, but I was glad to see it, I didn't think it was such a terrible, terrible article. I don't think that you were personally attacked. I think they were kind of saying, you need to straighten up your act and follow the rules that you should already know. And another thing I think that the public hears is, you have too many closed sessions. Everything is a closed session. If you talk transparency, what's transparent about that? You know, we're not dumb people, and gosh sakes, we don't come here to hammer on you all the time, I do now and then, but quit having all these closed sessions. Tell us what's going on, quit having secrets. We're all in this together, we're all gonna pay for that water, so let us be your partners. Quit going against us over here. Thank you, guys, I'll be back.
Thank you, Loretta.
Dustin, would you like to speak to whether you made a statement that said we were absolutely in the wrong last meeting?
Yeah, I, I'd encourage you to get the audio, because, where'd you go, Loretta?
Ah, here I am.
I did not say that, and I can't say that. I'm not the judge in the jury, that would be a judge and jury determination. So, what I said was, there's enough of a question to where it doesn't matter if this was a clear violation or if it wasn't a violation, we should change the policy so that in the future, it's completely above board, and no member of the public or fellow board member will have any concern about it.
Amen, I think you should, but I did hear you say conflict of interest. I hope you recorded it.
It is recorded.
On the website.
We can provide you with it.
Good. You recorded that, too? We'll find, we'll find out, but I don't want any conflict of interest, I've been on enough boards, and that was one of the first things I learned, is to, anything that even has a hint, run, don't get close to it. And I think that George should have advised all of you about that very thing, he certainly should've told Seth, because Seth would be rubbing elbows with what could've been interpreted as conflict of interest, and then you automatically recuse yourself. That's not difficult to do. Thanks, guys.
Dustin, would you be able to make any comment in regard to whether a newspaper can print an editorial of lies without having any legal recourse?
I can't, and I won't. The reason is, I'm the attorney for the district, and not any one individual board member. So, I am actually prohibited by ethical rules from giving advice to clients that potentially have conflicts. So, I can't represent party A that's entering into a contract with party B. So, I cannot give the board members individual advice on whether I think this article is libelous or not.
You can't speak to this, it in general, as to whether an editorial can be held liable?
It would be, the plaintiff in that action would be the district, and the district would have to prove it was injured as a result of that. So, there are inaccuracies, there's always, you could always make arguments that there's liability, but, you know, I would really discourage that, I would. I think we should fix the inaccuracies, and we should fix the policy so that this doesn't come up in the future, and hopefully move on.
Question, what is your advice about us doing this, what we just made a motion on?
Which we haven't approved yet, but...
Which way?
Should we do it?
Do I think it's appropriate?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Good. Hey, I'd like to... We're kinda running out of time here, but maybe you could speak to the, just a short thing on closed session, just to remind the public why we have closed session.
Sure. The Brown Act is very specific on items that are appropriate for closed session, and not, the general rule is everything should be handled in open session. There's very few exceptions, and occasionally the district fits within those exceptions. One example is personnel matters, that's because there's privacy concerns. Another example is pending litigation. If I have a case that I'm handling on behalf of the district, I need to be able to speak to them in closed session, so that they could give me direction and discuss strategy and those types of things. So, it's, all I could say is, the district only goes into closed session for legitimate items, and everything else has and must be handled in an open session.
Thank you, Dustin.
Mr. President, oh, go ahead, move up there.
Oh, I think if I heard correctly, you're gonna, you requested demanding a retraction from the Post, is that was included in the motion? Is that what I heard?
That was my amendment to the motion.
Anyway, I would just would have you consider that very carefully, if you get into a spitting match with people that have a lot of ink, you will come out looking... looking the worse. Don't need to look like petulant children, but, you know, handle it very maturely.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to this matter?
When I was voting yes on this, and I realized the amendment, and I voted for that, and we're just getting ready to move, to vote for the motion as amended, this first sentence and the second paragraph, I thought was the main inaccuracy of this whole thing, because there was no ad hoc committee formed that I know of. That was before my time on the board, and they just stated that. It would have been a standing committee that would have approved this type of stuff, whether it did it a month ago or a year ago or whatever.
No committee.
Committee that would approve any purchase or contract.
No, but they would have put out getting glass for the building.
No. Not the standing committee.
We do have to look at our policies in real detail, and that's what our attorney was saying, and I was saying on this. So, I'm gonna have to vote in a different fashion on this because of some other items, even though I voted for the amendment. I'm ready to vote.
Well, one of our members had to excuse themselves for a second, so we'll give it a couple minutes. Was there anybody else from the public that had something they wanted to talk about in regards to this? Or did any other director-
I'd like to hear the amendment, since Dan brought up that thing. What did the amendment exactly say?
In the motion that the PID demand a retraction be printed by the Paradise Post once they determine those items are inaccurate.
I voted for the amendment.
I wish I hadn't now.
After thinking about it, I'm going to not vote in favor of having the Post look at this. If it was looking at the committees and the other items, I would have done that, because an editorial is an opinion.
Just so you make sure, those editorials are not opinions. I have an opinion that they had an ad hoc committee.
But they should be truthful.
Yes, they should. The amendment, it's a pronoun issue. When I said that, and they retract it if they agree, if they determine that they're incorrect, that is not if PID determines that they're incorrect. That's if the Post determines that they're incorrect.
Was that in the motion, Adam?
That's what he meant.
We don't care what he meant. What was in the motion?
That was in the motion, but the way the English language goes, you guys are thinking that it's just if PID says, determines it. We would send an argument in that says, these are incorrect things. You can check it out further. You can research it. Once you do your research and determine that it's incorrect, then it should be appropriate that you print a retraction.
In other words, we're doing a lot of dialogue on this, but that's what communication's all about. If we mentioned that ad hoc committee, and they agreed that there was no ad hoc committee, the Post being, they agreed with it, well, then we would want them to put some type of editorial out or a statement taking it back that it wasn't ad hoc committee. That's what you're talking about, Director Hott.
Wasn't an ad hoc committee, it wasn't a standing committee, it wasn't a committee of Sep and Ken.
Right, any committee. Any committee that anybody was involved in.
The only word I don't like in the amendment is demand.
Oh, I like that word.
You do. But I voted for it, so.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote now, if the directors are all done, or inquiries on that. Torjenna, roll call vote, please.
On the original motion?
As amended.
As amended.
Director Flusher?
No.
Director Kellag?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
No.
Director Duncan?
No.
Director Frawl?
Because of the word demand.
Yes. Yeah, there's, as some of our wonderful people through the community have said, they've got a lot of ink, and they're very good in all they do, and very competent. Trevor, you can pass that word back to them.
Now, if you want to make another motion, cannot. That might pass.
I have no, I have no confidence in the board passing anything like that.
Okay. If that is it, and we have no more motions, we will adjourn from this section, this special meeting, and get on to the real meeting. I will point out to the public that since we did this at the same time as our other meeting, the same night, that the district ratepayers are not enduring any extra cost for what we just did there, so.
Mr. President, can we take a short break? Or I need to run back to the little boys.
Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Better start moving, Doug. You're not the only one.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, February 20th, 2013, at 6:41 PM. And once again, can I have a roll call, please?
Director Flusher?
Here.
Director Hutt?
Here.
Director Frawl?
Here.
Director Kellogg?
Here.
Since we're all here, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I would like B and C removed from the consent calendar.
Future, for further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we approve the consented calendar as changed.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Anybody else want to have anything else discussion on that? Okay. Can we have a vote, please? All in favor with the removal of the approval of the consent counter with removal of items B and C? Correct? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstains? Okay. Passes 5-0. Public participation, someone, I'm gonna ask someone on staff, too, to remind me when I need to drop that back in, B and C.
Okay, it's your discretion, is the president, you can deal with it now, or you can deal with it in the meeting.
You can do it right now, or anytime you want. Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do that right now.
Okay, the reason I had them removed was because I know Bill was gonna talk about the staff report, and there's no, you should not talk about anything that's on the consent agenda, so you should remove it, so, and also, I want to talk about something on it. Consent calendar is-
To be approved for things that you don't need to talk about.
Mm-hmm. So, if you want to talk about something on the consent calendar, you remove it.
Okay.
That's the way it should be done. Okay, on the staff report, the question I had was concerning the letter about the discharge. Is there, you didn't mention it in your staff report, so that's why I wanted to talk about it.
Are you referring to Jim Passanese's report?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was an incident that occurred, we had a, we have a meter, that we meter the flow up to the process water recycle ponds, and so, what happened is the meter came apart and unhooked from the pipe, so there was processed water that was surfacing in the ground and running into Little Butte Creek. So, we immediately contacted the regional board. We took our samples as we are required, we filed our reports, and at this fine, Jim, they're satisfied with everything at this point?
Yes, we sent a follow-up letter to the regional board with some corrective action and some water quality sampling results. I haven't heard back from them. But this incident did take place prior to our staff providing, this is current, it's February, so George wanted to have it in, give you notice, but this was a January report. So, as George called it, can I give you a heads up early?
Right, okay. Was there any chance of a penalty? A fine?
No, there's no, there's no discussion on that.
Right, okay. That was my concern, was, and then, and I just wanted to, another reason I brought it up is, I want the public to realize that we don't just collect rainwater, put it in the pipes, and bring it to you. There's a lot of other things to go through it, and there's a lot of state and federal regulations. I don't know about federal. There's a lot of state regulations that we have to go through, and they are not cheap. And that's why we can't give you rainwater. We have, it has to be worked on, and it's a big job. That was the reason I brought it up.
Thank you, Larry, for pointing that out, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and the other one was the authorization of the payment for the election. There's a note on there, something about people who qualify for something, and I didn't understand that. You gotta, go to the invoice, yeah. Says here, for entries that can, the SB 90 absentee thing, the amount can be claimable to absent, is there a chance that we can get some of that money back? That's what I was wondering, on that invoice.
That would be Dustin's question.
Yeah, you know, state mandated means somebody has filed a test claim, they've prevailed, and the state is required to reimburse them as some of their election costs. I candidly do not know off the top of my head what SB 90 is.
Oh, okay.
So, I could look at that. My guess is, this is for entities that have to do elections, even when there's unopposed seats.
Oh.
There are some entities in California that that's the case, and because the legislature has mandated that they do elections, even when there's technically not a contest, that they may be reimbursed the election costs.
I was just hoping that maybe we could get some money back.
I could look into it.
Yeah. If you think it's worthwhile. But if you're, you're probably correct, it's probably the mandated on the, whether there's somebody running or not. Okay, that's all my question.
Anybody else have any comments on items B or C of the consent calendar?
You don't have any, Bill? Staff report?
No, no, I don't. I don't have on the consent agenda, I didn't have any questions about it.
Okay, good. I move we approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 And no ayes, so five approval of that, items B and C. The next part, it's gonna be public participation. Once again, I'll read this for you. We'll remind, if we exceed 48 in here tonight, we have speakers outside, so for public participation, everybody will be given a chance to come up, come inside, and do their part if there's something that they want to speak to that's not on the agenda. So, individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda, although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public comment on agenda items we provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. And is there anybody that wants to speak to something other than what's on the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Board, again, for this opportunity. Previously, when I spoke here, I was a little critical of some things, and I think it's time for some praise. George said that he was working towards getting the district to where they could telephone when there was a continuous water flow based on the smart meter program. I do maintenance at an out-of-area owner's house here in town, and they called me to say that they had just received a call from PID to say that they had a continuous water flow in the previous 24 hours. I went over there and found out that our lawn maintenance person had not turned off the irrigation system nor shut off the valve, and it was stuck on. And the district was correct, the water had been flowing for a continuous period over 24 hours, and we shut it off, and I am very much appreciative that we finally have that part working, and I thought it was time for some praise.
Thank you, Ward. Anybody else like to speak?
I would like to speak, please. However, I do have a special request. As hard as I tried, I tried to get this down to five minutes, and I couldn't do it. I have a lot to say, but it doesn't go for hours. I would like to ask that it would be allowable that someone donate their five minutes to me so that I can complete what I have to say here.
I'll donate my five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Somebody parks up the street, and they're gonna, police are out there, and they're gonna tow your car. That's me, because it's a big pile of leaves out there, and I'd like to rev it up on the curb. Did they tow your car? Did they? I don't know, there's a car out there in the police. Well, thank you very much. I'll go out. Not for the rent, so. He said the cops are up and out. So, they are, well, I'd rather run. I don't run anymore.
Run carefully.
I don't run at all.
Thank you, sir, for letting us know that. Looks like I saw at least two hands of people that will donate their five minutes of time to Mr. Ladrini, and if you would, please state your name for us.
Yes, absolutely. I just say it right now. Good evening. My name is Jim Ladrini, and I'm proud to say that I'm a work in progress. Thankful to be here tonight and to have this opportunity to openly express some of my thoughts. However, before I go further, I would like to specifically address the Paradise Post. I'm thankful because I have the right to speak. I'm also thankful because I have the obligation to every person here to do my best to speak appropriately, accurately, truthfully, and responsibly. I say this to you, Paradise Post, because I want it to act as a reminder as you consider the content and the intent of your future editorials. There have been two times in my life when I felt that I was actually contributing to the good of the community. As I reflect on these times, I realize that what I view as contributing is a service I bring to others without regard to my own benefit. One of these times is when I became an employee at Paradise Irrigation District. Finally, I have a job for the first time in a long time where I could be useful and I could contribute to the good health of my community. This is a job where I could once again become a part of something valuable. This is a job where I found more than just a paycheck. This job has purpose. This job has helped me go beyond the work we do. This job is, in fact, why I'm standing here tonight. It's taken near half of my life to this point to realize just how important it is to serve others, how valuable it is to have character instead of being one, how important it is to exhibit integrity and to serve for the sake of serving and nothing else. This town in Paradise Irrigation District is full of men and women who have good character and display their integrity quietly and effectively as they travel through their day-to-day lives here in our community. Many serve as examples of what I hope to become. However, as of late, I have seen and heard too much negativity, too many unwarranted attacks and innuendo, so much that I feel it necessary to say what I know about this community, its people, and especially the Paradise Irrigation District. I'm not here in my own interest. In fact, it may not be in my best interest to stand here and speak tonight, yet here I am, and I'm not here to condemn anyone. I am not here at the request of anyone. I'm here simply because I call Paradise home, and I believe in this organization. I'm here because I believe specifically in the employees of the PID. We, the employees, deserve more respect than has been evident as of late. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Barber, directors, I've been an employee of the PID for over five years now, I have had the honor and privilege of working with some of the finest men and women I have ever met. This year marks a major change at the district, as three of those people will be leaving us. These people have been true public servants long before I came here, so it is also my intent to honor and respect them while I'm speaking tonight. These three individuals have spent the better part of their lives representing this district well and serving this community with pride. They have persevered through difficult growth, adapted to many changes, and conquered challenging obstacles. These three individuals are the builders of the foundation that I have the honor to work on today. It is a strong foundation that will allow us to serve this community with honor and integrity today and in the future. In fact, it is a foundation that I see as something right in this community. I am also grateful to them for the example they set for me personally and for the hand they've lent in my growth here at PID. Director Kellogg, you were a director when I first came to the district. I quickly developed a respect for your opinion, whether I agreed with it or not. In fact, more often than not, I did agree with it. Due to your actions and comments, I viewed you as a director who was sincere and supportive. You quietly criticized us and offered suggestions and comments after you periodically toured our corporation yard and work sites. Your approach was appropriate when you talked with us, you offered support and encouragement, you praised us for the work we were doing, you asked us questions, and you genuinely listened to what we had to say. Sometime back, that began to change. We, the employees, have not changed our course, Director Kellogg. Therefore, with the respect you deserve, I sincerely hope you hear all I have to say tonight. What I see as right are the men and women that work for this district, the ladies in this office that continue day in and day out to provide some of the best customer service on- on this planet. They care about what they do. They genuinely care about the people who live in this community. I would put their quality of customer service up against anyone. Our office administrative and support staff is top-notch. The tedious requirements set forth by the state, insurance requirements, personnel issues, customer relations, they're all handled with efficiency and professionalism every day. Our engineering staff works on local issues with great efficiency, providing excellent benefits to the operation of the district treatment and field operations, as well as dealing with many administrative tasks that are quite daunting at times. We have treatment plant operators and supervisors who provide safe, clean, good-tasting drinking water to this community. They are challenged with increasingly stringent requirements and constraints and work with knowledge, understanding, and creativity to adhere to and often exceed these requirements. Would ask you if you've been to Paradise Lake lately? The grounds are beautiful, and the structures add to its appeal and usefulness. Our lake patrolmen, our staff, and even volunteers contributed to that effort. By the way, did you enjoy your Christmas Eve this past year? If you drove up Skyway, you'd have seen several men willingly and with great attitude, strong spirit, working to get a major mainline leak repaired so that many residents would have water on that special day.
That's a job.
It is, it is, absolutely. These men and women work with strong spirit, determination, and positive attitude for many reasons. Some reasons are personal. Is it the pay, the benefits, the challenge, the camaraderie? It's likely they do it for all these things and more, and we are grateful. I believe I know another reason we do it. We're public servants. We know what it means to be a servant, and we serve this community in the highest standard. I believe it's important to say these things because these men and women are the backbone of this organization. We make it work, and it works well. No, it's not perfect, and it never will be. And that's good, because it causes us to continue to stand up to challenges and overcome obstacles. We will do it with commitment to this community and professionalism. Why? Because when it comes right down to it, we're a team, a family, if you will, of individuals who will at times struggle with one another, will disagree with one another, but at the end of the day, we will support one another. Which leads me directly to my point. The point is support. The point is leadership. I recently read a book written by Coach John Wooden. Coach Wooden was a head basketball coach at UCLA and is considered by many to be a very successful leader. In this book, he talks about leadership. Coach Wooden says, "The most essential thing for a leader to have is the respect of those under his or her supervision. It starts with giving them respect." Sound advice, I say. And it goes beyond this, because a real way for a leader to give respect is by what he or she says and in the way that that leader acts. This district has good leadership. We have it in our directors, all of our directors, and we have it in our management team. We also have it in our district manager. Mr. Barber gives us the direction and the support we need to do what we do. We don't always agree with him, and it's natural to do that. In fact, I had an unfortunate experience that caused me to very carefully and thoroughly examine a certain action by Mr. Barber. My opinion of that experience is mine to keep, but I will tell you that I came to believe he had the best interest of the district in mind when he acted. That is one thing I see as very consistent with and what I believe is sincere about our manager. This, I have come to believe, is an exhibition of his respect to us, the employees, and the members of this community. Later in his book, Coach Wooden reminds us that a leader's ally is his or her own example. What a wonderful piece of advice to consider. Walk the walk. And this community, the men and women of this district, deserve a leadership team that walks the walk. Walk the walk, directors! Lead by example. We need it, we want it. Show us what it means to have integrity by the way you act and by the things you say. In short, give this town and the employees of PID the example we need and the respect we deserve. Much of our leadership training we receive here at Paradise Irrigation District suggests a best leadership practice is to discipline to improve, not to punish. We are also reminded that the best criticism is done privately, whereas when someone is to be commended, we should do it publicly. I believe this is a strong and effective philosophy. Therefore, I will quote Coach Wooden once more when he says, "I feel that hard public criticism embarrasses people, antagonizes them, and may discourage them from being receptive to your message. It is counterproductive, whether it's on a basketball court or in a business establishment." I will add to this by saying, it is also a show of great disrespect. I think we would all benefit from finding the strengths of an individual or a team and commending that publicly and working with that. So for me, anyway, it seems to boil down to this. Starting at the highest level, we need a leadership team that is able and willing to set an example of what teamwork really is. We need a leadership team that puts petty squabbles and differences aside for the good of the whole. We need directors who define what professionalism, respect, and honor truly mean by the words you use and the actions you take. In a nutshell, we need an entire board that is able and willing to walk the walk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ladrini. That was sound advice there at the end. Definitely think that we could use some of that these days. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda?
That was a great, long speech, but I hope he realizes that all of us are part of the team, too.
I think he does, Loretta.
And, and so, give us some consideration, too. We are the team.
Thank you. Anybody else have some, or would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda?
Yes, I would. Gray Camry LE Edition, lights are on. There's a book in the back by T.C. Boyle, The Woman, and San Francisco Ballet. Someone have a gray Camry? It looks gray, it just light, the lights are on.
Okay.
It's parked on the very end, the very end of the case in this direction.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe we can get the board to put some money and more bigger parking on there. It's coming.
It's in the works right now.
They got more open seats?
It's coming.
I have the license plate, too. I haven't known it.
If somebody has that vehicle, if they...
Six UVE six three two, license plate.
Is your lights on?
Do you like the ballet?
Anybody else have an item that they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, at this time, then, we're going to move on to committee reports and presentations. These are board oral reports regarding the representation of commissions and committees that they are on. The first one is Butte County Special District Association, Directors Hunt and Duncan. And who is on, who's the chair of that?
I'm from PID.
Okay.
We met on February 5th, the Butte County Special District Association. The speaker was from the California Special District Association, Dorothy Holzing. And primarily, she was talking about Pension Reform Act that really was just designed toward Cal-Pur's agencies and didn't really have any impact of information that I could report back here. However, on a side issue, I will say, we did not have a quorum, so no business was voted upon or conducted. And as a, as a side issue, there was a question brought up as to whether the Special District Association is really fulfilling a need now and should continue on, or whether it should be disbanded. So I think the board will be looking into that over the next several months. And that's all I have to report on that meeting.
Thank you, Director Hunt. And Butte-Lafco, that would be Director Duncan.
Yes, we had our meeting on February the 7th in Oroville at the Supervisors' Chambers, and we approved the acceptance of the auditor's report for the year-ending June 30th, 2012. And we set up a Treasurers' Committee, and I was asked to be on that. We're, I'm not Treas, Finance Committee. And then on our regular agenda, we are extending more services for Chico. They're not in, they're in the sphere, but they're not in the city limits, so therefore they have to get special approval from Lafco before they can hook up to the sewers. So we're doing it on a one-on-one. And that's basically all we had for Lafco. I also, on the, on the 7th, 8th of February, I had a meeting in Irvine with Cal-Lafco. To save money, the, Lafco pays for my expenses for, for the Cal-Lafco. To save money, we, I had a phone meeting with Irvine, so I didn't have to go down there. And we're working towards, we're going to have our convention at Lake Tahoe in August. And we approved, we did approve the increase in the dues of 2.1% for, to Cal-Lafco. That was the main business.
Thank you, Director Duncan. Paradise Lake Recreation Committee, we have two new members on that committee this year, Directors Fleischer and Hunt. And I believe, Director Hunt, you are the chairperson on that?
I am, but I'm going to turn the report over to Director Fleischer.
Thank you, Director Hunt, on that. We have ten members on that committee, and it's Director Hunt who's actually the chair as far as the board is concerned and myself. This is the first committee that I've had the good fortune of serving on, and I was told after I was appointed that it's the fun committee of the whole time, and you can figure out the beautiful lake we have up there, things going on. Then we have our lake patrol people, Craig Dobbs, who's actually chairs the meeting when we have that with the ten people here in the community, anybody's advice, and then David Orr. Staff members is George Barber and Jim over here, and then we have one from the Upper Ridge Coordinating Council, one from the Rec Department, and two public members. So it's a well-represented, and it gets a lot of good things, a lot of happening. We had three or four items of business, and I'll hit those real quick, project updates. The Shaded Fuel Brake and Forest Health Project, which I really was interested in when I was campaigning and talking to different people about it, and it's going quite well, and that's because of everybody. Fire Safe Council and CDC, and we have crews up there working all the time. And so far, we've got thirty-four point two acres are completed, and I think a bunch is a piles of brush being burned as we talk. And some of the area that they're cleaning, the manzanita was twenty to thirty feet tall. So you can figure out what kind of a fire went through that, if it had ever started in that. And I've had the good fortune of walking through it, they had an open house, and it's really going well. In that particular point, hopefully, we're going to be able to get on to another thirty acres thereabouts, but bird nesting is involved. We've got a couple of nesting bald eagles, and we have to work within that. And Greg is really involved in working on that. And Glenn Nader, who is a really leading university extension service person that I've worked with in detail on a lot of different projects, just took Greg and Dave, and they went around looking at endangered plants and marking them before, in this next thirty acres, before the CDF get there, because they take everything's in sight. One of the nice things they're doing, if you're acquainted with McNabb Cypress, which is a real plant that grows in serpentine areas, which there's a lot of there, they're working on rehabilitating a bunch of that. It makes good deer habitat. Paradise Lake Recreation Activities, we talked in detail on the ADA parking, the signage, and then last, so last time, this is my second meeting, I've attended only once as a committee member, they, we are now going to have a concrete bench, is a solid one, if you'd like to buy one as a memorial. Looks very similar to the one that the district served for John Hanky, and it's out here by this window, and their beautiful bench, and they'll be there forever on this particular point. There's also boating and waterway preliminary design, and concerns needed for SPI, Zero Pacific Industries easement, and for vehicular stuff down there in George, as he does so well in all these areas, is working with SPI to discuss that easement. Kids Fishing Day, which is a fun time, is going to be on April the 20th, and we had quite an interesting discussion on that, and there's going to be a couple of stockings going on. And the Butte County Fish and Game Commission, which collects the fines for violations and spread them out, and it was in the paper, I read that also in the paper, and we're going to get fifteen hundred dollars for stocking that. And there's some humongous fish in there. There's going to be some fish dumped for these kids that weigh ten pounds. I forgot how many, not very much. But there's going to be solunkers coming in there, and I learned that petroloid genes, they not able to breed. If you remember, one time, Director Duncan and Kellogg were on that, fishing game was not going to allow anybody to dump in there because of the diversion of the creek and wildlife and all this. Well, those fish cannot breed, so they just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and that's why Paradise Lake is such a great place to go fishing.
It costs too much.
Well, you need to come, you need to come to one of these meetings and voice your opinion.
Thank you, Director Fleischer, for that.
Did you, I noticed that they added some financial things about the lake in our staff report, was, this is new, isn't it?
That was what was provided in the Lake Committee annual report.
Right, okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you for that report on the Recreation Committee up there at the lake.
The next meeting is April 10th, you write that on your book. Kids Day will be the 20th of April.
It's going to be a lot of fun, too, Kids Day. Always a good time. The next item is Administration and Personnel Committee. I have a feeling this could foster some lengthy discussions, so I'm going to remind you that this is just a report, and there'll be plenty of time for a discussion on it when it becomes an agenda item. So, Director Hunt, would you like to give us a recap of last night's meeting?
We met in regard to several items. I'll just start taking them one by one and tell you where, where we are and what we did. We had a discussion regarding the Paradise rules and regulations and policy manual update. And to put you in per, to just tell you where we are, we have rules and regulations and policy manual. Over the course of the last several years, some portions of the policy manual have been updated and rewritten and are in effect. We discussed them, voted on them, and implemented them. Right now, the balance of the rules, you know, and the work has continued on to make adjustments and changes, and then they'll be brought up to committee again, and we'll discuss them, and we'll bring them to the board and decide whether we're going to implement any changes. But the new rules that have, that have been written, the new portions that have been prepared have been cross-referenced with the existing rules and policies to make it easier for us to go back and forth when we do get around to discussing this, and to make sure that we don't fail to keep any needed topics in there, because, you know, something could be in the old, and we just failed to bring it forward to the new, so that'll be part of our job, making sure when we bring these forward. So now we can, we are going to be comparing the new version and the old version. Then we're going to compare the new version with other district policies to see what they have and whether they're closely aligned or drastically different. Then there's going to be a recommendation, they should come back to the committee, so we'll meet again, we'll evaluate those items, and at that next committee meeting, we'll make a, hopefully, we'll be making a recommendation that we'll then bring to the board for final The next topic we discussed was a discussion on potential policy regarding director access to legal counsel. And there, director's actions to instigate legal research without board approval. You know, right now, as we know, any director can just call legal counsel and say, "I've got a concern about this, I'd like to see some action on it, I'd like to see a study done," and cha-ching, the leaders start running. In the same respect, we kind of go to various members of, of management and perhaps divert them from their normal jobs. But anyhow, we, we had discussions about this, and, and we're, these are some of the ideas that we had floated up, so I'm going to bring them up tonight, and, and we're still going to be researching and looking for input from the board. and looking for, uh, input from the board, so I'll tell you some of the things we discussed. Um, we, we discussed perhaps requiring board approval prior to, uh, requesting something that is going to spend dollars. So instead of a director being able to tell Dustin just to start researching something, uh, we're talking about perhaps getting, requiring board approval for that. Board member, uh, may deem that we find it necessary to expend some money like this. We're thinking that the board member, uh, would advise the president, uh, and if both agree, um, then, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, or the board member can, of course, put it on any agenda item, but, uh, it would come to an agenda item. While we, we also discussed the, the aspect, there may not be enough time to put something, wait for it to come to an agenda item, uh, so that we know that a, a board member's gonna need to have some flexibility there, and we were thinking that perhaps we would, we would consider a policy where if speed is of the essence, that the board member, instead of just adding something to the next regularly scheduled meeting, would go to the president, advise the president of the issue. And if the, uh, if the president agrees that it's time-sensitive and, and shouldn't wait for the board to approve the expenditure of funds, then with those two, they would go ahead and through the appropriate channels, um, which we think would be the general manager, then the general manager would advise legal to go ahead and, and based upon the director designation, you know, uh, look into this topic. That would allow then the director, who has made the recommendation, to open the door, contact, contact legal, and legal would know that it's an approved action, it could go ahead. We want to remind the directors that the director giving directions to legal should not discuss that topic with any other director, other than the president, or any other person, whether it's public, private, confidant, wife. Uh, it, it should just be kept private, uh, because it's district business. And transparency, which we're all concerned about, of course, shall be made to the public at any open public meeting, should the topic come up before the board or a standing committee. If legal deems it a brown act, non-public issue, then of course, it's gonna remain in a, in a closed section, session, like if it's personnel matter, or if it's a contract matter, or if it's a, a potential legal matter. And, um, we're still, we're, we're thinking about researching this, uh, similar policy in regard to directors, um, contacting our management staff. And then we're, we're thinking that, um, uh, we might want to expand this to make a, uh, just to get it into a policy so it's understood by all, that the management team would be working under similar rules as the directors. You know, if somebody on the management team said, "Well, I need to go contact our attorney and complain about this issue and, and get something going there," uh, we want to have something in place that would help us to regulate, uh, the dollars that we spend, but still yet give board members the flexibility to get pressing issues immediately addressed. Uh, and that's where we are, so what we would like to have back would be, um, uh, board input, uh, you know, about other ideas, or to say, "Hey, that, that's completely off-world, I don't like that at all," uh, or whatever you may think about it, or, or give us some further clarification and advice on how we should proceed with that. So we just kicked off that, that, uh, that meeting, and it's in its infancy, and there'll be lots of development yet to go with that.
Will we receive, will we be receiving a typed copy of that in our minutes?
Well, that's pretty ugly.
Well, I mean, a typed copy, you, you need to look at my hieroglyphics, too.
Let me summarize the suggestion.
Right, right, that's fine.
Okay.
Kind of like you've done on the Lake Committee? Did you do the Lake Committee?
This was a meeting last night at four o'clock also.
I understand.
We then had a, well, uh, one of the other topics we were going to discuss was, uh, regarding a potential partnership with Salvation Army for a customer assistance program. Uh, we, we did not discuss that because one of our key players was out ill, couldn't make the meeting last night, and since, uh, Kevin had a lot of information on that, we, uh, we did not address it. Next item was a discussion regarding update to board committee section of the policy manual, as was, uh, brought up in the past, and, and so the committee met in regard to that item. And in regard to that, policy on establishing an ad hoc committee. Uh, we reviewed Dustin's memo of December 14th, which everybody got, and provided, uh, district manager input, uh, to develop potential policy changes. We're gonna bring those, uh, policy changes, um, back to the committee for reviewing work, and then, uh, the committee will evaluate those items once again, uh, prior to bringing a recommendation to the board. The items that, and here, once again, I'll give you some ideas of what we had discussed, and we will make this, uh, you know, available to the board members, so you can, uh, use it as a, as an aid and help, uh, help us develop this. Some of the changes that we put in here is in formation of committees. Uh, right now, we say something similar, pretty generic, uh, "The board may form committees composed of its own members for such purposes as it deems appropriate." And then it talks about appointment of standing committees and, and appointment of committee members and meetings of committees. So we want to make this more, uh, definitive, and, uh, we're, um, planning on adding a, a sentence in here that says, "The president of the board may form ad hoc committees composed of board members for such purposes as they deem appropriate. An ad hoc committee shall be comprised of less than a quorum of directors," which we always do anyhow, "will be of limited duration," which is part of the definition of an ad hoc committee, "and will have no continuing jurisdiction," once again, a definition of an ad hoc committee. The way that we appoint committee members for standing committees, uh, we are not recommending a change in that, you know, we do it one time of the year, what, the first meeting in the, of the calendar year in January, the president, uh, populates the committees. However, we're, we're looking at some changes here, appointment of committee members, um, and just restating that the district's annual organization meeting, the president of the board shall appoint members of the various standing committees. In most cases, members of committees shall be members of the board, you know, the park, uh, recreation, the Lake Committee, I think, is the only one that really has any difference there. A second item, and this is new, committee assignment shall only be changed during the calendar year by a majority vote of the board. We felt that there may be instances where committee makeup would need to be changed, and if the board so agrees to it, you know, the board would certainly have that power to change the makeup of a committee.
The past policy is, it can't be changed at all, right?
Could not be changed.
Yeah, okay.
President of the board shall appoint, uh, members of ad hoc committees. Number four, the president of the board may appoint a replacement committee member if a committee member is unable to fulfill their duties, and no meeting of the committee has taken place without the board of directors being updated by the committee in a meeting. Which means that if we've met before in a committee, we've discussed things, only two people know about it, we can't share with the other board members right away. So if we're gonna change members on that committee, then we have to have an open board meeting where the committee educates the board to all of the information that has transpired so far, so the entire board is up to date, then if it's deemed appropriate, the president would, uh, reassign somebody to that committee. Uh, meetings of committees, just the notice, the standing committees, and there is no other, no other changes there. So we're trying to make it, uh, real clear about what a standing committee is, what an ad hoc committee is, how, how they get formed, and under what circumstances we'll have some flexibility to change committee members in the future, uh, should a situation come up where our board member moves to, Costa Rica, Guatemala, Nicaragua or someplace, and only comes back every couple of months. Uh, it, you know, we, we had a situation like that, and it was very, very difficult to continue the business of the district when committees needed to meet, if that person happened to have been appointed to a committee before he decided to go off down to Costa Rica. So we're giving ourselves some flexibility in that area. And we'll be looking, you know, and we'll, we'll make, I don't know if this has been passed out to the, all of the... But we'll, we'll get this out to you guys, and, and we would sure appreciate some feedback in regard to that, and your opinions on it, and see if you want to continue in that direction, change direction, make it more fleshed out or less. The next item, this was a long committee meeting, yeah, last night. Was a, um, was a discussion regarding capacity fees.
I'd like to comment on that. That actually should be under the Finance Committee, that should be under Personnel and...
We didn't have, hey, George, are you gonna let me report what the committee did on that?
Let him finish, if there's a problem.
We decided that we wanted to have this handled by the Finance Committee, because so much of it is dependent upon Kevin's input.
Oh, great, thank you.
In regard to, um, what it would mean if we were to make a change, and he has a terrific way of coming up with a program, and if we're gonna be changing this fee, or eliminating that one, or changing it to a different manner, what will the impact be? And it's very nice if, if the Finance Committee would be involved in that, uh, before we would then come back and say, "Okay, now if we're gonna make a policy change in the rules and regulations, whatever we're gonna do, we'll, we can have it there." But, uh, also, uh, since those items would be, what is it, Proposition 218, George?
Potentially, depends on how we...
How we would change it, yeah. If, uh, if it's gonna require a rate change, uh, then Proposition 218 is very specific about what we have to do, and, and we just felt that the Finance Committee would better be able to handle that. And, um, there, and we adjourned.
Good question.
We went home for the night.
The, uh, didn't the ad hoc committee on, on George Barber also meet?
Uh, that was after this meeting, meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my next report.
Okay, good, it wasn't on my list, I wanted to make sure it was.
There was a, uh, a twofer again last night, where like, tonight, we have, we have two meetings. Uh, so, no additional cost to the, uh, to the district for something like that, but, uh, we were, we were continuing to try, and, and, uh, in regard to the ad hoc committee meeting, uh, as you know, we had met in, in early February, uh, late January, early February, we wanted to get our recommendations out to the full board, uh, two weeks in advance, so you'd have time to go through, uh, digest it, do research of your own, where we provided, uh, links to the state of California Comptroller's, uh, Controller's, uh, website, um, and all of the reports that we had done. So we sent it out, and at the same time, then, um, uh, we sent it to legal for vetting purposes, to make sure that we were legal within the new requirements from the City of Bell and anything else that, uh, that we might be stumbling across. And, uh, sure enough, uh, we had stumbled across some things that, uh, that legal thought we needed to, um, be more specific, more clear, we couldn't do something in this manner, so if we wanted to achieve that, we were gonna need to do it another manner. And I think the board of directors saw two or three revisions come out on that. And the, uh, the absolute latest revision was, what, you know, at 6:00 PM last night or, or so, uh, which I didn't then get to Kevin until he called me up with my work schedule. I wasn't able to do it first thing this morning, so I got it to him afternoon, which he then just made a few little minor changes, but, uh, so we have, uh, we have the committee recommendation, uh, which we will present when we, uh, when we get ready to open up the, uh, the discussions on, on, uh, George Barber's, uh, performance review.
Oh, okay, you're not gonna give a...
Yeah, you know, it's such a, a long thing to get into, and then we, we might as well be just right into the topic at hand.
Sure.
So...
Okay. Will it be the first thing before...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Good.
Yes, yes, it will be. Thank you Director Hunt for those two reports.
Two or three or four?
Yeah, yeah, you were up a few times in a row. District Manager's Report, George, regale us.
Yeah, my written report, I don't have a lot to add tonight, except one item, and then I'll answer any questions. Thanks to the outstanding efforts of all of our employees and their, uh, attention to safety and property protection, and all the things that we have insurance for through our Quaid Towers Insurance Authority, I was informed that you will be receiving a rebate of $74,500 from our insurance provider this year. So my kudos go out to all the employees that put their effort in to make practices a, a primary purpose. I hope the public recognizes the difference between going through a PID worksite and others. Um, the guys are trained well, they're respectful of the public, and they make sure it's a very safe environment, not only for the workers, but also for the public that has to deal with that inconvenience. And, uh, with that, I'll answer any questions.
I'd just like to say that's a job well done, and that is considerable amount of money to get as a rebate.
Is that from workman's comp?
Workman's comp, property, and liability, all three.
What was the total figure?
That's our record, I believe.
That's a considerable chunk of change, right there.
Yes, very helpful.
Excellent job to the employees. Okay.
And management for providing the training.
And management, yes, from the top down, all employees. So anybody had any questions for George as to the manager's report, anything that was on it that he didn't speak to? No? Okay. We'll go on to a legal report. Dustin, I believe, has a, at least a single item, or maybe a couple items for us?
Uh, just one, and I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, you'll recall, we have a pending test claim with the Commission on State Mandates. Uh, for the public's benefit, there is a state agency called the Commission on State Mandates. When new legislation is enacted that affects public entities like Paradise Irrigation District, there's a process where you could file what's known as a test claim that alleges that this is a reimbursable state mandate. And the district has filed a test claim challenging the Water Conservation Act of 2009. That's legislation that is very costly to implement, it requires basically 20% per capita conservation by the year 2020. And as I said, it's very expensive to implement. So we have a pending test claim. The update is, and I've been, I keep giving you this update, but the Department of Finance and Department of Water Resources, which are the entities responsible for responding to our test claim, they have continually requested extensions to respond. And this is probably the 10th or 11th extension that they've been granted. And the commission has finally said, "We've had enough, this is the last extension we're giving you." So they now have until April 7th, and we also have a hearing date attentively set for December of this year. So finally, that case is, is moving, and again, we're hoping that we'll get a reimbursement for, for all the public funds that are going into this conservation effort.
Absolutely, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dustin regarding that? No? Okay, we're gonna move on to old business, looks like we have none, and then we're gonna start new business. Before we start that, um, I'd just like to remind everybody that by George asking for a salary adjustment, he's done nothing wrong. He has not committed a crime, he is not on trial. I'm gonna ask and remind everybody, uh, that who's gone down the path of asking their employer, uh, for a raise at some point in their life, that you probably did not have the public voicing an opinion as to whether or not you would receive a compensation adjustment. So I'm gonna ask everybody to remain respectful and orderly in their comments tonight. Um, we will maintain a nice session here tonight. So, um, with that being said...
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd also like that we, if you want to speak, make sure you're recognized, directors and people, and don't talk from the audience, get up to the podium.
Exactly.
Because we don't need people going back and forth, it'll be very confusing.
Exact, exactly, thank you. So there are two items, thank you Larry for that, there are two items tonight regarding the district manager. The first item is the performance evaluation of the manager. We can hold this an open session, we might move it into closed session. We can hold this an open session, we might move it into closed session, um, but there'll be no discussion of wages in that closed session, just for those of you that want to know. You will have an opportunity to comment on his performance during this item. Please do not comment on the contract proposal during the first item and please do not try to repeat comments made by earlier speakers. When you speak, the District Secretary, well, I have elected to make the District Secretary the timekeeper for tonight and, uh, in just an interest of, in the sake of argument, uh, we won't have one of the directors do it, I'm gonna have the District Secretary. So, she'll be keeping a five-minute time clock, she's gonna raise her hand around four minutes and so you can start wrapping up your comments, but at the end of five minutes with all the people that probably want to speak tonight, we are going to be ending it directly at five minutes. We're gonna do an evaluation. Uh, we'll begin with, the evaluation will begin with Director Hunt bringing everyone up to speed on the entire issue. Um, there's been a lot of conjecture as to what the ad hoc committee is actually doing. Um, we're gonna actually tell you what we've been doing and our latest recommendation. Uh, then we will move to Director Kellogg's requested evaluation on, and on to the full board's evaluation. So.
I'd like to say something to that. The ad hoc committee latest thing is not on the agenda.
Well, he just said it's a committee report.
Right.
Okay, well, does it, that's what I asked about here, they said they were gonna do it at that time. They, instead of doing it down with committee reports, he said he was gonna do it at the beginning of, of the event.
The report you've been getting on why we're here tonight, you want to hear that, right?
No, I wanted to talk, give my talk like it's scheduled here and then I can sit down and, and relax a little bit and listen to Ken's report on the ad hoc committee.
Well, I'm gonna arrange it the other way and I'm gonna have Ken do his report first and then I'm gonna have you do your report and then we will get on to, um, the open session evaluation by the rest of the directors. So.
Okay, well.
Without further ado, Director Hunt.
This is just to bring the, the board and the public up to date. And all of the information and discussions that we've had up to this point, uh, this will contain the, the committee's recommendation through the Board of Directors and, uh, starting right off, I mean, in here is going to be the recommended salary increase and other, other issues.
It's on the wall.
So, I will be mentioning that, but it's, you know, this is really just to get through the, the entire breadth of, of our recommendation. Number one, change the employee's descriptive title from District Manager to District General Manager. We propose to modify the existing perpetual at-will contract as follows, an effective date as of March 1st, 2013. We will establish a position wage range, the District General Manager's pay range for future use specifically and primarily, but with a minimum of a hundred and thirty-two thousand to a maximum of a hundred and sixty-five thousand per year. Uh, we, the committee suggests increasing the employee's salary from a hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars effective March 1st this year. And then that we change the employee's annual review deadline to July 1st of each succeeding year, just to make sure we all understand, therefore, after implementation of a pay increase this March, the next scheduled evaluation and contractual adjustment shall be for an effective date of July 1st, 2014. Item E, if the majority of the Board of Directors provides a satisfactory or higher evaluation of the employee and the employee's annual salary is less than the existing maximum in the salary range, then the employee may receive a merit increase at the discretion of the board, which however, shall not exceed the minimum, the maximum of the salary range. Failure of any member of the Board of Directors to provide an evaluation of the employee by July 1st of each year will be construed to be the equivalent vote of a satisfactory evaluation of the employee. Item G, the employee shall receive a cost of living adjustment in both the salary and salary range equivalent to the cost of living increase in US Social Security for the then current calendar year. H, will modify the vehicle provisions to simplify the employee's personal use of the vehicle to be unlimited while employed by the district, except for periods of leave taken by the employee. The employee, shall I wait until the beeping stops?
It stopped. You're all right.
I doubt that we'd turn the phones off, please.
The employee may use the vehicle during periods of leave, provided the employee pays for all fluids used in the vehicle during such leave period of time. The employee will have one hundred dollars per month deducted from employee's pay to compensate for personal use of the vehicle. And the last item here was all other items previously provided in the manager's employment agreement remain in effect. The committee has provided this revised recommendation above in order to fully comply with the legal requirements as determined by our legal counsel. Previously, we've provided the board with the website for the California State Controller's Office, so you each could study the existing reports on all California governmental agencies' salaries. One of the most compelling comparisons used by the committee in making our recommendation was the chart provided in October of 2012 showing how the manager's income would have increased if he had been hired as an employee in a comparable IBEW, which is International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, which is our main employee union, salary range, with merit increases and with cost of living increases just exactly as the IBEW received over the same time period. Uh, for your reference, I did this to the, for the board members and here it is again for the public. This is the chart that was provided, which shows, and I'm not gonna go over every single item here, but shows what happens when George was hired on September 4th of 2004. If he were treated exactly the same as an IBEW employee, then on July 1st of 2005, he would have received a, a COLA increase, cost of living increase. He would then, on his anniversary date of September 1st, 2005, have received a four percent step up in his wage bracket as moving from the entry level to the top level. Uh, and then that would have gone on through this entire process. As you can see, in 2010, there was no cost of living increase for the IBEW and there was none for July 1st of 2011. There was one of six percent for July 1st of 2012, it was because of delayed contract negotiations. I just had to display it in that manner because in reality, we gave a three percent COLA on January 1st, 2012 and then again on July 1st, 2012. But anyhow, that gets you to the ballpark of where George's salary would have been if we had treated him no differently than an IBEW employee and where he would be today would be at a hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred ninety-two. On July 1st of this year, he would be a hundred and sixty thousand three hundred sixty-four and on September 1st of this year, he would be at one hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars per year. In addition, the committee asked the District Manager to compile a list of unusual cost savings contributions because the entire board is aware of a lot of very important and key items George had personally brought forth to the district that saved us a lot of money. So, we asked him to provide this list that were specifically attributable to the District Manager's engineering education, engineering certification and efforts provided beyond the normal requirements of a District Manager's job. I have a memo that's dated January 2nd, 2013, that was previously provided to the full board and is again attached for your convenience and we will go to that in a moment. Do you have that available to go to? Okay, don't go there yet. After discussing all of the items identified, the committee is discussing these and the board discussed them at one point, uh, the committee removed eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars in savings, reasoning that, uh, these could have been provided by another competent District Manager and maybe weren't quite as specific as, as we were looking for there. And after eight and a half years of employment, the committee agreed that George Barber was the individual force in achieving a net cost savings after taking out the eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars of one million three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. This actual reduction in expense incurred by the district averaged a hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars for each year of the eight and a half year time span. This cost savings is actually more than the suggested annual increased salary that we're suggesting we pay him. In addition, there will always be a low-end projected cost savings of twenty-four thousand dollars per year due to George's engineering certification. And we will continue to save over a hundred thousand dollars a year in the PG&E energy savings derived from the Megalia Water Bypass Project. And that's only going to go up as PG&E's rates go up. If George were to never contribute any additional unusual cost savings contributions while employed here, and I felt compelled to say which the committee feels is unlikely, then still yet, the annual net cost for George to fill this position at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year, after you account for the twenty-four thousand dollar engineering certification that we, we save on the low end and the hundred thousand dollar PG&E bill, uh, if we paid him a hundred, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year, those two cost savings alone will mean we're really just having to fork out thirty-one thousand dollars a year for his impact to where the district would otherwise be. If the district were to cease to employ George Barber as its District General Manager, we would be faced with having to replace him with another person who also has an engineering certification. Looking at the past history of PID in the 28 years before George was hired, there were two managers, Steve Felty and Ray Auerbach, that held the engineering certification for a total of only eight out of those 28 years. The 20 years previous to their employment represents over seventy-one percent of the timeframe where the district had to outsource the engineering certification requirements as Phil Kelly, the District Manager at that time, did not hold the engineering certification. Naturally, we could choose to hire a replacement for District General Manager without an engineering certification. We would then have to decide upon one of the following three courses of action to take. We could require our existing Assistant Engineer, Neil Acella, to take the applicable education courses and certification examinations to become, to become certified in a reasonably short period of time. Another option is, we could terminate the employment of Neil Acella by eliminating the position of Assistant Engineer and aside from hiring a District General Manager, we would hire a replacement engineer who holds the required certification. Or, final option is, if we hire a District Manager that does not have the engineering certification, we go back to what we did for the 20 years when Phil Kelly was here and we outsource the engineering certification needs of the district. In any of these three scenarios, it is likely that our cost to employ an engineer holding such required certifications would require a significant amount of pay increase for the engineer ultimately employed. Otherwise, perhaps it would only cost us maybe just the twenty-four thousand dollars a year on the low end of our estimate of the benefit we receive from George. Uh, but possibly it could cost us forty or fifty thousand dollars a year to add to our engineering payroll in, in addition, you know, for outsourcing, in addition to what we would be paying for a District General Manager if he does not hold the engineering certification required for the district's needs. At this time, I'd like you to, Kevin, to bring up the Paradise Irrigation District letter, uh, uh, George's letter to us dated January 2, the cost savings action. I know I'm gonna put most of you guys to sleep out here, uh, but I'm not going to continue reading this word for word, but it'll give you an idea. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna hit the major topics that, that George did. He not only identified the item where we had a cost savings, um, he spoke to the item explaining why there was a cost savings and the, the committee asked, talked to Kevin about this and we, we went as far as we could go in verifying and vetting this information. But we have rate increase studies in 2005 and, and then again, 2010. And as George said, many water districts throughout the state hire consulting firms to complete the rate increase studies and, and compare, prepare the documentation necessary for the proposed 218 process, which is a very cumbersome, detailed, thorny issue. Uh, George's urban, the Urban Water Management Plan, uh, most of the water districts throughout the state hire consulting firms to prepare that. George saved us that money. Uh, the District Safety Plan, Water Supply Rehabilit, Reliability Final Report. Yeah, George's, once again, his engineering education and his certification allowed him to complete the report without hiring a consultant that we would have to pay for with district funds. The Megalia Reservoir Bypass was a significant, um, uh, project, you know, there, there's two aspects to that. One is the aspect where it saves us over a hundred thousand dollars a year in true energy cost that we used to have to spend to pump the water instead of taking this, this concept, building this pipeline and letting the head pressure just flow it up over the dam with no cost, um, except for the pipeline. And in regard to the pipeline, it was George's foresight and, and thought process where he found this odd way of going down and partnering with, who was it, Butte County, uh, in, in some manner, uh, where we, he, he was able to apply for a grant there that we, we got and it saved us, what did we get on the grant, four hundred eighty thousand?
Forty, yeah.
Um, many of the grants, well, since I've been here for seven years, we must have received two million dollars in grants. Uh, most of those are, excuse me? Okay. Most of those are collaborative efforts from, uh, George and from the accounting and from field personnel, uh, construction superintendents, from a lot of people that put forth efforts for us to document, send out and get those grants. This was something that was not on the horizon for us and nobody had the, uh, the idea or the skill level or even knew to go out and, and do this end run through the county and get on to their coattails so that we were able to get that grant and save four hundred eighty thousand dollars in construction cost. Uh, we, we knocked a couple of these things out of here, the, uh, the administration, uh, building acquisition, yes, that saved us a ton of money, eight hundred thousand dollars because of acquiring this building here, uh, rather than building it when we built that one over there that we were building in our original plans. Everybody spent way too much money for this. Nobody's asking, well, if you were to build a facility and, and, and get out of the, the antiquated area that we were in, what would it have been? We had studies on it, we had drawings on it originally to go in. Well, George asked for the savings and we appreciate him making that for us, but we decided not to award it to him alone. We thought maybe somebody else might have seen that and done the same thing. And there was, there was another area there, but, uh, these are the type of, of issues that we went through. I will say this, I'm gonna give you a little bit more in-depth information about George's engineering license. Uh, the district is in, is required to have a licensed engineer responsible for the design and construction of public works. Although we hire registered licensed engineers for our larger projects, uh, George's license is used on a regular basis for the district. Without a district engineer onboard, the assist, uh, the district would need to outsource day-to-day engineering functions. Every pipeline replacement, every pipeline replacement that goes in the dirt. Every pipeline replacement, every pipeline replacement that goes in the dirt, pressure-reducing valve replacement and changes to the treatment plant would require consultation and design input, input from an outside engineer. Why? Because our assistant engineer is not a certified engineer. George is a certified engineer. We would have to get a certified engineer to sign off on the plans to make sure that they were right. The Town of Paradise recently had to hire an outside consultant when their town engineer left for another opportunity. The rate was one hundred dollars per hour, which is low compared to the rates we see when we hire firms. The cost to the district is estimated to be one hundred to two hundred dollars per hour and maybe twenty to sixty hours per month. The annual range would be from a low of, as I said before, twenty-four thousand dollars a year to as high as a hundred forty-four thousand dollars a year. So pick a number in between where we're, we're gonna end up if we don't have a certified engineer on staff. Going, going back to my narrative of the committee recommendation, I'm, I'm kind of getting close to the end. Uh, we would like to draw attention to the board, of the board, to the letter that was written by the distribution superintendent of Paradise Irrigation District. That was also previously provided to the board members. Once again, we have attached a copy of the letter for your convenience. The district superintendent eloquently points out the difference between stagnant, reactive, caretaker district managers that ended up hurting the district health and a progressive, self-motivated, forward-thinking district manager. Clearly, this valuable thirty-four year old, year, not year old, but thirty-four year on the job management employee, our distribution superintendent, placed George Barber in the latter category. You can go ahead and post the letter. He just kinda poured his heart out in here. I'm not sure if I'm gonna read this entire thing or not. Some of it's a little hard to follow, but he, he started off by saying that, "Over thirty-three plus years, twenty as field superintendent, I've had the opportunity to work under five different district managers and numerous district board members. During that time, I've had the opportunity to experience differing personalities and different styles of management. Some leadership styles were fairly conservative, both physically and operationally, allowing things to seemingly remain the same with little change. This type of leadership tended to be a reactive style which would wait for circumstances to dictate the need of the day. Communication with the public was minimal, transparency lacking, and public outreach nonexistent. At times, regulatory agencies had to exhort the district into advancing. There was little future planning, and in growing community with an aging and antiquated system, this style proved to be costly for the community. As the world around us advanced, technology and with infrastructural improvements, our district stagnated. This was brought about by the philosophy of physical conservatism that was implemented and on the surface apparently saved money, but in the long run allowed the district infrastructure and water quality to deteriorate. This type of leadership does not have a clear vision and does not provide adequate direction for the district. Other leadership styles tended toward a more progressive methodology. This style of leadership looks forward and anticipates the needs of the community and the entire water system. Physically, this type of leadership tends toward being less conservative and plans for future needs, establishes business plans, develops fiscal strategies and means of funding through grants, low-interest loans, et cetera, and focuses on keeping a stable cash position while focusing on a pay-as-you-go philosophy. These leaders were transparent with district activities and problems and engaged in public outreach programs to better educate community. This type of leader has a vision and provides direction for the district and is proactive as opposed to reactive. There were other styles of leadership which were blends of these two styles as we experienced leadership changes. Of course, along with the manager, we have an ever-changing board of directors. As we know, board members are laypeople representing the community. Few board members know anything about drinking water systems, drinking water regulations, daily system operations, or quality, water quality issue. That was the definition of me seven years ago when I first came aboard. Because of that, board members hire water professionals, a district manager, to tend to the day-to-day operations, hire staff, plan for the future, secure funding, and implement the board's financial mandates. Boards can influence managers and encourage or discourage particular management styles. Stronger managers will maintain their particular style and bring forth issues that are important for the growth and well-being of the district and the system. Some board members become agitated by this and unfairly so. It is important that managers bring forth current and future issues and possible solutions. It is the board member's responsibility to study those issues and solutions and vote appropriately in the best interest of the community. Ultimately, the district is here to provide quality, safe drinking water that is available at all times. Do the managers and board decisions provide for this? That's a question. During the period from nineteen seventy-nine through August nineteen ninety-five, I worked under the leadership of my first manager. During those years, the district was run physically conservative. Most pipe work was necessitated by road improvements or a pipe that had too many leaks and had created significant road damage. There was no formal replacement program. In those early years, there was even a rollback in water rates while at the same time the system was rapidly deteriorating. In October of nineteen eighty-four, the district went in to an austerity program and two full-time field workers were laid off. The district was mandated by the State Health Department to meet water quality standards, standards which we were not meeting at the time because we only chlorinated the water as there was no treatment plant. The board chose to buy in to a part-time filtration which was utilized to treat some of the water and blend it with untreated water to meet the water standards. Several millions of dollars were spent to just meet the standard. In the quest to save money, the district also bought into an untried technology. With this technology, there were numerous plant failures, breakdowns, and problems which required countless hours for repairs and changes. The addition of a treatment plant changed the hydraulic gradient in A Zone and district crews laid pipe to accommodate the changes necessary between A and B Zone. An electric pump was added by district crews to the number-two pump station as the hydraulic gradient made the old number-one pump station difficult to operate and it was subject to frequent failure. During this period, there were seven field workers maintaining the entire system. Each year, the number of leaks in the system mainlines were increasing. In nineteen eighty-four, there were one hundred nine mainline leaks, close to what we have been averaging in recent years. By nineteen ninety-three, nine years later, there were six hundred sixty-one mainline leaks. During this period, the field superintendent would place in his report the importance of the increasing number of leaks, though there was no data quantified at the time. He stressed the need to ramp up mainline replacement. This is the field superintendent's recommendations. In nineteen ninety-two, funds were finally budgeted to increase the workforce and seven new personnel, two backhoes, two dump trucks, and two service trucks were added to the workforce, doubling the workforce and efforts were made to begin replacement. One of the first projects of our, of our new workforce did was to assist the contractor during the re-line of the forty-two-inch transmission main through the winter of ninety-two and ninety-three. In nineteen ninety-three, with six hundred sixty-one leaks, crews still spent the majority of their time repairing leaks at a cost of over a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars for the year, for the year just in leaks. Due to lack of foresight and commitment to meet water quality standards, less than ten years after the part-time treatment plant was constructed, a new plant was required by the State Health Department to provide multi-barrier filtration one hundred percent of the time. The millions spent on the first plant were for naught. During this time, there was little public outreach and little effort made to inform the public of the program of the problems with the system. Keeping the status quo was the norm. By the way, Kevin, are we still paying for that abandoned plant?
Yeah.
We haven't paid off the debt yet. Thank you. In August of nineteen ninety-five, the manager, who was not an engineer, retired. For the next six months, district staff was under the direction of an interim manager as the board hired a civil engineer to temporarily manage the district. During that period, the focus was mainline replacement and routine system operation. In February of nineteen ninety-six, a new manager was hired by the board and stayed for a short period until January nineteen ninety-eight. During this period, field crews focused on system operation, leak repairs, and mainline replacement. During this time, dam safety required the lowering of the lake level at Megalia due to safety issues with the dam. Work was started on the construction of the raw water pump station and storage tank as the treatment plant would not operate with the lowering of the water in the Megalia Reservoir. During this period, the manager was looking into the feasibility of hydroelectric power, reviewing all department operations for efficiency, and conducting long-range planning meetings with upper-level management staff to delineate future needs of the district and develop a long-range plan for the board. Upper-level staff attended board meetings and started a public presentation of the year-end report under this manager, something not done prior to this manager. From the end of January nineteen ninety-eight to early June of nineteen ninety-eight, the district was once again directed by a contract manager, a civil engineer who had previously assisted in nineteen ninety-six. In early June nineteen ninety-eight, a new district manager was hired by the board, a civil engineer, with years of water experience and management experience. During his tenure, there was a focus toward contracting work out, particularly asphalt work for both miscellaneous patches and trench work on pipe projects. The question had been posted by the board as to whether contractors could do the work cheaper. This was tried several times, but as time went on, asphalt repair cost escalated and became very expensive. A pipeline project was also bid out to contract on North Libby Road. A Proposition thirteen grant was pursued for pipeline replacement and district crews replaced leaking pipe with the use of these grant monies. Under his guidance, the district started its first attempts with system leak detection. During this time, the assistant engineer retired, and after he left, a replacement was hired. There was no successorship planning and a lot of valuable information was not retained. He also hired the first full-time treasurer. During the tenure of this manager, customer service was placed as a top priority. Water quality, quality service was implemented. Public outreach programs were increased and upper-level staff attended meetings with local service clubs to make presentation on district operations. This manager left in two thousand four. Not too much left. The next manager, who was a civil engineer, was hired in September of two thousand four. In two thousand five, the first strategic business plan meeting was conducted with upper staff personnel and board members, meeting to work out a business plan for the future. Existing debt was refinanced. The manager pursued the feasibility of installing a bypass pipeline at Megalia Reservoir which would assist in future dam repairs, provide for safety in the event of a spill from Skyway into the reservoir, and save upwards of a hundred thousand dollars in pumping cost per year. Grant money was obtained for off-road equipment replacement. Grant funding was obtained for pipeline replacement on Skyway and Billy Road. The corporation yard project to relocate and consolidate office and maintenance facilities together for increased efficiency and worker safety was implemented. A low-interest loan was acquired for the corp yard. The triple-A building was bought, renovated, and office staff relocated. Remote meter reading was installed in the entire system. Succession planning was initiated as the manager realized that key management personnel were due to retire in the near future. A second strategic business plan meeting was conducted in two thousand ten and again assess future needs for the district. The manager implemented the bridge water tour to further educate the public about operations and key issues affecting the community. Public outreach with the schools was started. Frequent turnover in a key management position can create a loss of direction and continuity for the company. Day-to-day operations continue along, but long-range plans can stagnate without the impetus of the manager. Succession planning is crucial to a stable working environment. Usually, positions are filled after a person leaves. It is difficult to retain the knowledge of personnel who have worked for thirty to forty years and understand the nuances of a system and its personnel. Succession planning was a very important strategy for future planning. Without short and long-term planning and presenting options and possibilities for growth and change, the district would stagnate and create a reactive rather than a proactive environment in which money is, in which money spent is money wasted. We've tried that model. This was a letter produced by John Price, the, the distribution superintendent. The last part of the board recommenda-, uh, the, the committee recommendation to the board, uh, is that our recommendation above and above in regard to the salary range would not place the employee at his salary range cap that we have suggested of a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, but the committee still thinks that should, this should be a topic for open discussion with the board and if somebody on the board would like to consider moving his, the, the committee recommendation up, then they're, feel free to do so. And that is President Corolla, the committee report that the ad hoc has been working on for the last several months.
Thank you, Director Hunt. Um, I'd like to thank you for the countless, probably close to a hundred hours that you have invested in this agenda item. Um, I know I had the easy end of the deal on that committee, so Director Hunt prepared most of this, did the research. We would meet, confer, and, and take it to legal counsel and get opinions there and corrections. And so this is a lengthy thing that we're required to do. Once George brought this forward, correct me if we're wrong, but we're required to follow through with this. So, we can't just turn our back to it and say, oh, we can't hear George talking right now, so we'll just go ahead and move on to other business. This is something that we have to address. So, at this point, um, we have Director Kellah, um, the director's evaluation of a district manager Barber's performance. Director Kellah, about eight to ten minutes.
I, I think before I start, maybe you all would like to, it's gonna be short than what I asked for. So if you'd like to stand up and stretch and do it, and that would be appropriate right now before I start speaking. I think we've all been through a rather tedious lecture and we need a little exercise. Then as soon as you get up and stretch a few minutes, then I'll start my speech.
Gonna wait a couple minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we just go-
Why don't we just go ahead and take a five-minute recess? We'll reconvene at eight-twenty. That might have been more appropriate. Go ahead and reconvene at this time? And Director Kellogg, you are up.
I'd just like to remind you folks, I'm elected to Division Two, I'm elected to serve you in the community, and that's my primary job, is represent you, and I've listened to a lot of you, and so far I've yet to find anybody that spoke in favor of George's raise. Absolutely no one. I think it's rather remarkable. Here's what I have to say about the valuation of the manager's performance. Some believe that our manager deserves the percentage colas of merit as a union negotiated over the last eight years. The manager was involved in all union negotiations, more so than any director. Some believe he should have the title of manager to general manager. My opinion, title has not been earned. And he has been compared to the general manager of South Feather Water and Power District in Oroville, which has fifteen million dollars in reserve. The general manager has served for twenty years and makes two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars a year. A comparison that counts, not just salary. All you were quoted with salaries tonight, the lists and so forth. So let's see. South Feather Power and Water has eighty-two-hundred customers. PID has ten thousand customers. South Feather has two water treatment plants. PID, one. South Feather has sixty employees. PID, thirty employees. South Feather has a power division, I don't know many powerhouses, George knows it because he worked for him at one time. So that's where their money is coming from. They have an accounting division, and they have actually been able to reduce water rates because of their performance. And yet, our ad hoc committee thought that was a fair comparison. The general manager at South Feather has earned his salary in time and place and business management training and being successful manager to bring into one of the most successful power and water districts in Northern California. They pay outstanding wages, much better than PID can offer to their employees. Now, our PID has projects still incomplete, late and not on budget. The board is poorly informed, hidden info from public using various devices to cloud and keep information from you and, and cases like me, from the directors. The wage increase certainly has not been earned, and thank you.
George, would you like to respond to any of that?
I will go on the record agreeing that General Manager of South Feather has earned his wage. He's done a great job. He took a leap of faith, get a board that supported him, a leap of faith to use district monies to relicense their power project so that they are realizing those benefits and they are realizing reduced rates. We don't have a couple hundred thousand acres of water and multiple power plants. It's true. This is a performance evaluation, and I guess I just wanted to commend my key, he does deserve all of that. Director Kellogg has made comments about late, not on budget, without any specifics, and I highly completely disagree with him that there is a transparency issue at this district and that anything is being hidden from anybody. Every word packets online, we are now putting recordings online, information's available to everybody. That's probably the biggest dig at me, is questioning transparency at Paradise Irrigation District, because I think that we are more transparent than any agency I've ever worked for, and I'd be hard pressed to find any that are more transparent than we are. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Was there any board member that wished to say anything?
I just mentioned that the South Feather, their electricity, the reason their rate is low on water is because they subsidize the water because of their electricity by a million dollars a year. I wish we could do that, too, but unfortunately, we don't have the electricity.
We don't have hydro.
Right.
Is it appropriate to ask if the public would like to comment on that?
It's an agenda item.
Okay. So would the public like to comment on what Director Kellogg just said or what George just spoke to? John?
Sure.
Deb, whoop, got a few people going up?
Well, I guess the point would be to find out why the ad hoc committee used that as a comparison if it's that much different from PID.
There was no comparison of that. You saw our recommendation. A board of director member asked for comparisons early on, and we provided comparisons, was it in December, maybe, December meeting or November? I'm not sure. But as we said at that time, we don't put a great deal of stock in comparisons, and we certainly did not compare just one person there. We went through the state website that was provided to the directors. There were, I don't know, how many listings of jobs and salaries? Sixteen hundred or two thousand six hundred or something like that? We tried to go through and find water districts that might be similar in size because it was something that was requested by the directors, not that we use that as our only basis or even as a really important basis of determining what we should pay somebody for this job in Paradise. We use the same argument when we're talking to our IVEW workers or when we're talking to our management unit group workers. They keep coming up and saying, well, look, South Feather pays this, so we should get that.
Cal Water pays that.
And we say, well, that's not the way that we do things here. We evaluate what we have, what we can afford, what we think is appropriate, and just like Bill is going to say to George, if you want that much money, then go out and find the job. That's what we will tell our people ultimately. This is what we offer, whether it's IVEW or the management unit, or Kevin, or George, this is what we're going to pay. And, you know, we don't want to be so rude as to say, and if you don't like it, then go find a job. But that's always the unsaid portion. And, you know, these comparisons were there because, in fact, I think maybe even the public asked for those comparisons. Well, I think we boiled it down to, what, maybe six or eight?
The eight we used.
Six or eight. And of course, we got nothing but flack for it, and ever since then, we never provided another comparison again, except for when Bill complained that the comparisons that we did provide were stacked, and he wanted to know about all the others, so we gave him access to the sixteen hundred so he could go find his own.
Did you get any comparisons, Bill?
What I did is I picked one district only out of the group of eight or ten of them, and because it was put there by the ad hoc committee as a comparison, and it doesn't stand up, and two-hundred-and-ten-thousand for what this man gets and does, and George, for what George is asking on a district of our size and service center, that doesn't match up. And I know place in here that I say George has to go get another job. I said, and I focused on salary. I didn't talk about particular incidents or anything. I was very general about it because I simply felt and had advice from my wife and others that I was getting so detailed, I would do what Ken just did, put everybody to sleep with all these facts and figures, and would be boring and probably a little bit mean. And so we decided that this was better for the program tonight, that I'd do a real broad brush. And I think it's a fair broad brush on George's service. I'm not in any place in here, or have I, complained except about specific employees on specific projects. Otherwise, I think we do have an excellent staff, and we do have a very good district. I'm not trying to do that. What we're here tonight is talking about George Barber's salary and whether he deserves it or not, and in my opinion, he does it.
And we're also here to do an employee evaluation for his normal yearly employee evaluation, so.
You had another public speaker.
Okay, John?
Thank you, board. Okay, I, when this came up, I did a little bit of research, and I don't know where your line is between your two agenda items, and I may boil over, but, and I apologize, stop me if you need to, or just, I'll shut up on the second half if I've already covered it, whatever your wishes are. First of all, George and I have had our differences. They've always been resolved in a good manner. We still got one pending, the rates, and I think that's going to fall more on Kevin. The fire meter, I think you did a good research. I mean, it was in a good manner. Location of a fire hydrant on Skyway was another issue, but we agree to disagree, and we go on. I don't know if he deserves a raise. I don't know if he deserves a cut. I don't have that personal knowledge. What I do know is that there's a company that has a satellite office here in Paradise. They have a quarter billion, not million, billion dollars worth of work that they're doing in the next four years. And their lead project manager, who is a civil, structured, mechanical, and nuclear engineer, makes similar to what George is asking for. I don't know, and he also has administered major bond-funded projects, including the finance end of it. So I, I don't, I can't, I don't have enough knowledge to compare side by side. I can't answer that, but a way to answer that might be to go out for, I don't know if you'd call it a request for proposal or applicants, and test the waters. See what these people will work for, see what their experience is. You may say, you know, the learning curve of them, we need to make sure we keep George happy. You may say, man, this guy is so qualified, and he's willing to come for this. It's one step that might be better than comparable. And I'm not saying even if you get somebody that's cheaper and maybe more qualified, that you might not say, you know, we're better off to keep George. And it's a learning curve that might work. The other thing is, I question the comparable districts, but I also looked at fifty percent of the water supplied in the state of California is by municipal corporations that have a water division. And when we're going to be paying the manager of our district, which I believe as well, is more, better managed than the town, the way the books look, when we're going to be paying him more than typically if he was the manager of the water department for the town of Paradise, you know, I question, and I don't know the answer. Lastly, something that just popped up is, from the comparison that was put on the screen, a six percent cost of living would put George from what is proposed already into the cap. It would take him from the hundred-and-fifty-five to a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand instantly. Does that mean that when the cost of living for the next year hits, that he doesn't get it, or does the cap want to put the cost of living, too? We may be looking at some inflation in the very near future. And the cost of living jumping significantly, but that just kind of raises a question that, again, I don't know the answer. But I would think the best way to do this is a learning experience and make, if it's founded, his raise is warranted, make it retroactive back to the first, but test the water and see who's out there, see what, you might not get any applicants, you may get phenomenal applicants. Who knows? Thank you.
For clarification for myself, the board, and public, can, Dustin, can we go out and test the waters, so to speak, by placing an ad?
Yeah, sure. The problem is, just to make everyone aware, George has an existing agreement that is perpetual in nature. So in order to terminate him, you either have to have a specific cause, such as misuse of office, which I don't think anybody's alleging, or you can exercise a termination without cause, and the current agreement provides a one-year severance. So the district would, in order to hire a replacement for George, would have to get rid of George, probably without cause, by paying one year salary.
In addition, let me say this. If we were going to replace George, we're probably going to advertise this with a, what's called a headhunter firm, a professional manager, so that will procure them. And they're going to, first thing they're going to say is, well, why is your current manager leaving? And we're going to say, oh, he's not leaving, we just want to test the water. The headhunter is not going to find us a candidate. So if we want to trick the general public and just put ads in the newspapers, in the San Francisco Examiner, Chronicle, whatever it is, the Los Angeles Times, Sacramento Bee, and so on and so forth, and we generate interest and we get people up here for an interview, they're, oh, I see your district manager's still here. Why is he leaving? And what are we going to tell the person? Oh, we're just shopping to see if we can get somebody cheaper. Now, how do you think they're going to look at that and think about their long-term future with the district? I think it's an impractical manner to go.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Dustin, also. I think I saw somebody else that wanted to speak.
Thanks for the answer to that previous one. Director Kellogg didn't address the specifics, and there are a couple that have bothered me, and George and I have talked about that. One is the 2020 conservation issue, which Dustin mentioned is going to cost too much money. Look, I was part of that group that was in Sacramento many years before they were discussing this, and the emphasis was on public education to conserve water at the point of use, not fixing leaks in the street. The system assumed you wouldn't have leaks in the street. That's what a good PID does. You don't let the water go to waste in the street. We're not doing that in PID, and apparently, after all the times that I've brought up, I still haven't seen anything where we're going to do something that educates the public and just to help others learn. PG&E started this many years ago to say, if we get everybody to conserve, we don't have to build another dam, we don't have to build another atomic energy thing, because we will have more energy to sell without building any infrastructure. They save money, and they can have more accounts, they can sell more electricity. It was very simple. Same thing is true with other methods of conservation. When I was part of the contingency that was in Sacramento convincing Governor Schwarzenegger to sign the green building guidelines, water conservation was one of the biggest things. And in the halls, you would hear them say, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. And the point was, we only have so much. Our biggest reservoir is the snowpack. When it's gone, it's gone. If we don't have ways to use that resource the best way possible through conservation, we lose it. And when it's lost, it just goes down the stream, it ends up in the bay, it ends up in the ocean, and until it evaporates and rains or snows again, we don't get it back. So we have lost that emphasis here. Several other water districts are way beyond what we've done. Good for getting a twenty percent reduction, which George has said we've already met through fixing the leaks in the street. We weren't supposed to have that. We're supposed to be doing education to save that. Also, the population of Paradise, according to 2010 census, is down point seven percent. We have fewer people here using water, which means you sell less water to the people that are actually using it. We also increased the population of people on fixed and limited income. How are we going to pay a rate increase to cover an increase in salary? It just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. And thank you for actually reminding me, because I had spoken to George earlier this year about getting with you on forming a conservation committee on what we're going to do, because you had some good ideas, and just unfortunately, with the amount of events that we've had going on at the district here in the past couple of months, we just haven't had a chance to get with you. So we will be doing that real soon. Somebody else out there? Deb?
I'm Deborah Carver, and I work for PID, and George is my boss, and I am part of the IVEW, and there's three levels of PID, there's There's the union, there's mid-management, and there's upper management. And I just feel that we should all be one, and if we get to three percent, I feel George should get three percent. I, I think he's earned it, and I think he deserves a raise.
Thank you, Deb.
Pardon? Are you going to do the big up?
Yes, I am.
PID paid three.
Loretta?
I thought maybe one of you. George, you got to pick up? You got to pick up?
Yep, he's mad.
Mr. President, she's out of order. Don't talk to her. Talk to us, please.
I think that most of the people here aren't here to lambast George. I think we're here to say, we can't afford what he wants. We can't pay anymore. Just a year ago, he showed us all those graphs proving PID didn't have the kind of money. Now suddenly, where'd we get all that money? That's what the people are worried about, their own pocketbooks. They can't afford George's. Look around town, how many people are paid George's salary? He makes pretty good money. We can't afford more. That's what we're trying to tell you. Not that George does the rotten work, or he's a lousy-looking, or he's ugly as a mud fence. We don't, we don't care. We can't afford more. That's what we're trying to tell you. We don't know how to spell it.
Thank you, Loretta. Okay, I thought I saw one more hand back there. Maybe I didn't, but is there somebody else that would like to speak at this time? Okay.
I'm a little confused as to the division of topics, but I'll jump in. I'm new to the game, and I'm not quite sure how long this has been going on. I actually work, I appreciated what the first gentleman shared about enjoying this company and working for them, and his respect for the leadership. I also work for a major employer here in town, social service agency, and I highly respect my directors. And one of the reasons is they decided this year that they would take no raises, so that the mainline employees could have a cost of living raise. So that's, I guess, the main thing that I really thought about when this came to my attention. First of all, it came to my attention in a notice from the board that you wanted references for artwork, for the walls. And that's what first grabbed my attention, because I thought, are they becoming patrons of the art here, or are they my water district? And I just thought that was really strange, that my money for the water was going to go for artwork. But I, you know, I just kind of let it go. And then my friends and neighbors started talking about this and sent me a list of what the salaries were here. And I thought, whoa. So I looked up the demographics of Buick County and Paradise and saw that thirty-two thousand dollars a year is an average take-home pay for someone in, in Paradise, thirty-three for Buick County. And as they said, a lot of these people live on fixed incomes. Well, I work for social services, so I see on a daily basis people who are losing their homes, losing their jobs, that they have to decide between a prescription and food. Our program was cut in half by the county, and we directly serve a, a group of people with extreme high needs. So we had to adjust our salary, our approach, and how we spend our money to serve those people. I liked what Mr. Hunt said about, you do what you can do, and in the end, you just say, this is what we can do. Because I think that's what a lot of people here are saying. Based on what the demographics are here, based on this economy, and what's going on with this country, I think it's time to be really cautious with how we spend our money. And I have no doubt they're very impressed with the job Mr. Barber has done. And in no way do I mean to denigrate that, but the ability to write a grant, find a grant, is not a big deal when you're in social services. That's how we fund the majority of our programs. You know, so I, my question would be, sometimes maybe some of the problems come in on the, like you said, you have a board of people that are laymen, and when they go to hire someone, maybe they don't have all the information necessary in terms of knowing what to ask for before they hire them. And so then they're at a disadvantage anyway, because if someone comes in and can write a grant or can do certain things, that's pretty impressive if you don't have that skill. But actually, that's not that big a skill in the social service world. So anyway, I hope I've been coherent. Just feel that we just can't afford it, and the people can't afford it.
Thank you very much. Item of clarification on the artwork that was brought forth by a resident of the community and wanted to know if he could display his artwork for sale here. The only way possible that we could even look at this is if we offered it and opened it up to the public. To date, do we have anybody that has brought any proposals forward?
No, I haven't put a, I haven't put a request for proposals out.
Yeah, so.
We're in the middle of changing directors.
We didn't ask for.
It hasn't happened yet.
We didn't ask for artwork in here.
Maybe I misinterpreted the letters that I wrote.
It was brought forth by a, a person in the community who wanted to basically display his art and then.
He happens to be here.
And then he's, I was looking for you, you had sat down, so, yeah, yeah, so. And we have to open it up to all the public, we can't just choose one without.
And we weren't, and we weren't going to buy.
And we weren't going to buy either. It was, it was basically display for sale, and there's some complications to just doing, just approving that. So is there anybody else that would like, I see a couple of hands. Lauren, why don't we have her get up there? Yep, haven't heard from this lady this evening.
I'm Karen Perret.
How are we doing, Karen?
It seems to me like what George is doing is what he was hired for, and that's what he was paid for. And he did the job, and maybe a few things not quite as well as he could, maybe a few things better, but it seems to me like he just did what he was paid for, and that's what we hired him for.
Thank you very much. Lauren?
First thing I'd like to apologize to the public, I'm not going to be able to speak near as good as the folks that come before me, I'm sure. But just a couple of things come up to mind to me. Mr. Hunt was telling us all about the stuff that he saved us for, he saved the district for. Then I was wondering, was he getting a hundred and thirty-four thousand as a part-time manager? Because he was spending all this time on this extra stuff that we're going to pay him extra for, so we must have been paying him a hundred and thirty-four thousand for part-time work. That was one thing. And the other thing is, as all the crowd knows, anybody who's a jack-of-all-trades is not good at any of them, really. They're just passable at any of them. And other things have been spoke to, but I'd like to say, I don't believe the President of the United States gets a cola. And with that, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Would any directors like to respond to anything that we heard? Or have any comments?
Could we bring up, well, first off, I've been watching George since before he was a teenager. And Trevor quoted me in the paper, saying that George is an extremely bright, capable young man. He was that way as a teenager. And I've watched, I did a little work with Orville Windott, and he was the engineer down there on some pipeline stuff that I was doing in Orville at that time. And I'd like to go to, you'll notice here is our evaluation that you've been able to read here on the wall, and it goes down to review criteria. And if we could go to, this is all public information, right? Okay, very good. Criteria number one, financial management. Okay? Good. This is last year we're talking about. Can everybody hear me back there? While he's finding that, I'd like to introduce two people that you all know, you've heard from this evening. Loretta back here, the redhead, beautiful lady, she was this year's Woman of the Year for the Elks. And she was honored last Saturday night across the street. And over here is Dan Whitland, and he's the Man of the Year. So we have some celebrities here this evening. Those two people are for sure, and they are volunteering all over town. Was asked, when he was, received his award, Dan, why do you volunteer so much? And he said, well, all the good people are out there volunteering. The damned old Grouches stay at home. And that's the truth, is why Dan volunteers all over. You'll see him doing things. And a lot of you people are the same way. Okay, did you find that one? I want, criteria one, the box, financial management. There we go. Okay, you can read it up on the wall there. I won't read the whole thing. Financial management, I'm brand new at all this year, where, but I've really been running hard, I've taken some ride-alongs. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a phenomenal staff here at PID, from George down or George up, however you want to go in that, there's no doubt about it. They're really capable people. We had a leak down here in the road as I went down from giving a speech across the road, they were still down there tamping the highway, and so they're all doing it. I'm going to read just a little bit of that comment. Now, this was last year's evaluation that we're doing tonight. Automated meter reading project with Chevron. Director Hall felt this was a very poorly planned project within the district's financial position, and that was not fully taken into consideration when they began with Chevron investigating energy-saving solutions and on and on. And also, the district manager, George, indicated he understood. My comments, and they'll be in readable form, George, now, when you get into it, if we wanted to say, didn't realize that. Director Fletcher totally agrees with past Director Hall concerning last year that the automated meter reading project with Chevron was a very poorly planned project within the district's financial position. Now, I think Hugh would disagree with this because he found a big water leak. And I may have voted for it, because I've got about a thousand foot of pipe scattered all over the pasture out there, and I hate leaks on here. But anyway, looking at our financial situation, you've got to think about it. That cost us five point seven million. Seven hundred and fifty thousand of it was for other things, but we actually had five million into it, right, Kevin?
I can reiterate that.
And, yeah, go ahead.
Five million was for the project. There's five hundred and seventy thousand sitting in reserve for the final payment of that bond. And then the remaining.
Twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, the remaining portion was for the issuance cost of those bonds.
We still owe five point five million dollars on that, there about. There about. And the district is twelve point eight million dollars, and Kevin and George do a great job keeping this informed that today. We just voted on here a two point eight million dollar, thereabouts, project for recycling water, and it's a great, it's a state mandate, so we have to do it. And that's what, one of the things that Director Hall was talking about in this particular point. And then I finished this up on here, and that was not fully taken into consideration. Then to compound the financial management problem facing the district, the district manager's original proposal to the board in October for a very large salary adjustment was more of a poorly planned presentation in sound financial management. And Director Hall gave him a two last year, it's a one-to-five thing, I prefer a one-by-ten, but anyway, because I'm an old teacher. He gave him a two, and when I do it this year, I have one here, then I cross out the one and I'll go back to the two.
We might want to save that till we actually get to the evaluation.
Yeah, okay, now, I'm going to go to one more thing on here. Number five, go to number five. I could go to all these. Number five, it's leadership.
It's on the very bottom there.
On the very, on the very bottom. You don't have his comments in there?
No comments provided.
Okay, no, okay, good, thank you. No comments provided. Well, I made some comments. District manager Barber appears to work.
Excuse me one second, Director Fletcher. Do we want to wait until we get into the evaluation process here in a couple of minutes?
I thought we were in the evaluation process, no?
No, we're still in the comments from back at, when we were.
Let me finish this one thing, and then we'll go to the next item I have.
President. Do we, do we want to do that, or do we want to wait until the eval? I think I want to wait until the evaluation process. This has to do with the evaluation.
Okay, I'll start out with leadership. But now, what are we evaluating, the dollars and cents?
No, first, we're doing his performance evaluation. This is two parts.
Well, this is the performance that we're talking about.
Well, no, actually, we were still on what Director Kellogg, where we started there, and with Director Hunt.
In other words, we're not on item two, open session, just.
We're not there yet.
Okay, I jumped the gun, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we're good. So before we conclude, item one, I wanted to make sure George had an opportunity to speak to it one more time.
I'm good on.
Okay, with what, the public and everybody? And any other directors had any other comments on that?
The public.
The public?
I have just a question for clarification.
Okay.
Are you, did I misunderstand, or are you giving George, or asking to give George Barber a six percent raise?
No.
Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand something?
No, I misunderstood.
We will discuss that.
Yes.
But right now, if you're asking what the ad hoc committee proposal was, the recommendation to the board, was to move him from one hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred? To one hundred fifty-five thousand. You want me to calculate the percentage for you?
Well, I think that was one of the people from the public that was giving you what a percentage increase would be. But all that aside, George, for clarification, when was the last time you had an actual raise? Because someone talked about.
Last time. Last year I got a raise, and there was a, a three-year period.
Period before that.
Permanent raise.
Exactly, that's what I thought. Okay, so, so, at this time, we are going to move into section two. And many of you in the audience wish to be heard on this item of business. I'm sure that the members of the board have comments and questions. Everyone who wishes to speak will be given an opportunity. Doesn't look like we exceeded the forty-eight, so I don't believe we have anybody outside at this point. But if they are, we will allow them to come in and do their public five minutes. I will remind the public, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Please try not to repeat comments made by earlier speakers. Once again, I'm going to remind everybody that during this item, we will all remain respectful and orderly when delivering our comments. We already talked about the district secretary is going to be keeping the five-minute clock. Before getting to the comments, I'd like to use a memo prepared by the district's legal counsel outlining the options before the board to hopefully give an idea of where the board is at. Again, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak before the board approves any contract changes. So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Are you going to be, we're on a little, double little i, performance evaluation?
We're on the, excuse me, thank you. Thank you for clarification. We've been long, so, yes. First, we're going to go into the annual performance in there, which is item two, and yes, I just read from item B. Thank you for catching me on that, even after I labeled it and everything. So, but all the same things apply. We're going to be doing the, and what we had brought up here on the board is what we're going to be going through. We'll start this off with the objectives, I guess, that the district manager's performance evaluation include the following. Provide a system to review the job performance of the district manager. Encourage accountability of the district manager through an annual review, which we're doing tonight. Document the expectations of the district manager and the district. Provide a forum for communication between the district manager and the district. Provide a process for goal-setting for the district manager. At this point, which way should we go on this?
Last year, what the board did is, they took it section by section, using the sheet. Each board member gave their vote, those votes were then averaged, and that was put into the sheet. In addition, any comments that they had.
Wasn't that done in closed session?
No.
No, it was open.
It was open.
Okay, what, we did something in closed session.
You can also do a performance evaluation, if the board likes, it's not required, in closed session. I guess now's as good a time as any. I'll, I'll remind you, though, you could talk about.
Performance, but not money.
Performance, and you could talk about the merits for a pay raise, but you cannot talk numbers. If you start talking numbers, then you have to come out of closed session and open session.
Come back out here.
I think we should just do it.
You do not have to.
We do not have to go into closed session.
No, we don't have to. I asked you to put us both there so that if we wanted to, we could.
Right.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Well.
We're going to do the evaluation first. My thought is open session also.
My thought is open session.
Open session, no closed session.
Okay.
No closed session.
Thank you. So each of the different evaluation points are outlined on here. Criteria one, financial, performance management, financial management, public service, communication, leadership, and legal compliance. So in our outline, all the directors have the, the point items on there. I don't think they're up on the board there, unless somebody wants me to read through them. I think that we don't need to. I think we've had a chance to have this, and so we should have our numbers filled out as to. out as to what we were going to do on there. So, and there are comments from previous year, last year, performance evaluation, which gave the overall rating, what we gave him last year. And what is a satisfactory is a three. Is that, I don't see actual satisfactory on here.
Acceptable.
iPad page 82 is the grading standard at the top.
It's at the top of the agenda.
I can see it, but satisfactory was what we referred to, but I guess that would be, I don't see the word satisfactory, so I'm gonna have to assume three is acceptable. It's expectations would be the one...
I think what would, you're referring to the committee's recommendation on the effect of a satisfactory rating.
Yes.
I think what we would have to do is either conform the committee's recommendation to this, or change...
Exactly.
Exactly.
Committee got sloppy on that one, sorry.
Yeah, yes, that's what I wanted to make, okay. So, we can talk about, we'll start with criteria one, financial management. We can read the, or the public can just read, the automated reading. Director Flesher just already read from that what Director Hall had to say.
So we're just gonna go maybe director by director, and we're gonna give a rating and comments?
Yep, and then if someone wants to keep tally, I'm going to appoint our numbers. That was you, yeah, that was you, Kevin, I know really. And he will keep track of our scores on there, so. Any comments that you want to make as you make this, and we can go through? So, Director Flesher, financial management?
Yes, I thank you both, I jumped the gun a little bit, I'm sorry about that, President Corolla. And everybody heard my comments on this, I agreed with past Director Hall's comments on that, and a lot of it's because of the financial situation that he observed, having been in the district for 16 years. I guess it goes on his 16th year when he decided not to rerun. And when I was campaigning, and many of you people are out there when I was campaigning, if you haven't ever had the chance to campaign for a position, because I was running against an incumbent Director Hall, in this particular case, you gotta go out and campaign. I like it because I love to talk to people and meet them. And at that particular time, in August, when I started, and I say this for you, George, George was held in high esteem by the people along with the rest of his staff, he really was. And in October, that started to change. And I guess when you're asking for a raise, you could expect that happening. And I didn't ask a question at all on that, but anyway. So, you really, I think for sound financial management, as I was said here, when you laid that on in October, that was not the best time to do it. Because there was a lot of people wondering about that in that particular point. And I crossed off my one, and I'll go back to a two. Huh? Director Hunt?
Mike, there?
Yes, I'm sorry, Director.
Okay. In financial management, there are those bullet points, the way I did this is, I said number one is yes, in the annual budget submitted timely and completely. Number two, yes, is the budget managed effectively? Are we staying within the budget? The answer is yes. Number three, how well is financial information applied to decision-making? I wrote down excellent. Are costs controlled? Yes. And the last one, are efforts made to enhance revenue? I put down that's a board job, not a district manager job. In regard to the evaluation here, I completely disagree with Director Hall this year, as I did last year, and to make a judgment this year based upon a previous director's erroneous decision last year, is the way I'll put it. I think that the Chevron project has proven itself as a water-saving device. We've got extraordinarily low financing. What's the interest rate on the financing, Kevin? One point something, or two point one?
No, that one was 4.5, but it was bonds issued, bonds over 18 years.
Anyhow, Mike, so I disagree with that. I did last year, too. Encourage, and then here's my comments, by the way, George, and you can have all of my comments. I just made copies all the way through. And my comments are that George is encouraging and allowing the CFO to produce analytical model, modeling tools to better view current and projected financial realities. This results in better decision-making data for the board and more pertinent information for the public. I rated him 5.0.
Okay, thank you, Director Hall, Director Hunt, yeah, I'm reading Director Hall on the thing here.
Starts with an H.
I know, yeah, exactly.
This one says chair.
Later.
Yeah.
I also agreed with Director Hunt on the first four items, efforts made to enhance revenue. I believe that is a board and the general manager's job in there. Every year, our auditor comes through, every two years, the auditor comes through every year, and commends us on our transparency, on how everything is in order, how George and Kevin are very accommodating and all the staff, and that they never really have to, they actually have to dig and look and find things that they can only really suggest, eh, you might want to just change that, because everything is in order in the district. So, I rated a four on there for financial. Director Kellogg?
Director Kellogg is not participating in this review. I think the numbers can be done. You just had an example, Flesher at two, five, and a four. You can see where it's headed, and I don't think it's a fair system. I thank Larry for bringing it to the board, this is used for, what is it?
LAFCO.
LAFCO uses this for their manager. But start doing a little bit of math in your head and see how the disagreements are on the board, and we have two men on the board that are very much in favor of George. So, I'm not participating, and I'll sit here and listen, but you won't get any ratings from me. I already gave my performance evaluation in my talk.
So, President Corolla, will we take the total and divide it by four to come up with the average rating?
Yes, we will. You don't want to be, you should want to participate, Bill.
Would you like me to put down one on every one of them?
You can do whatever you want.
No, I'm not gonna participate.
You should.
No, I'm not endorsing it, Larry, I don't think it's a good way to do it, that's it.
The reason I brought it forward is that this puts in writing our evaluation, it protects the board, and it protects the employee. And this, that's the thing, if you don't, this is your time to speak, and if you don't speak, then...
Well, I'll speak when I get another opportunity to, but I'm not gonna use this system. This thing can be juggled around too damn easily.
Right. Looks like five places to me that you could put in essential comments, just like Director Hall did last year.
You could give him a zero.
Well, I just have, haven't...
No, you haven't. By not participating, you're not giving him anything. You're probably helping him, and you don't sound like you want to.
I might have, I really don't care.
Okay.
I, since we're talking about the meters, we, when we did this, it was, we were flush. The economy was growing, everything was going great when we did this. Our first cost to do this was $25,000. Chevron was gonna look and see if they could save us any money, and the most we were risking was $25,000. Chevron came back and said, yes, we can save you if you go to this one, we can save you all this money, I don't know how long, maybe 10 years, you can get it all back. Then he said, but, there is this other one, that if you do it, you may not get all your money back. And the reason Mr. Hall was against it was, he didn't like it, but he wasn't at the meeting. If he'd have been at the meeting, it wouldn't have happened, because it was a 2-2 vote. And so, I think it's just sour grapes on his part. I like Rick, but the fact that he was missing so many meetings, he really hurt the district. But anyway, it went in with a, it was a 2-2, and then it went 3-3-1 when John Heinecke changed his vote. If we were going to do this today, I can guarantee you it'd cost a lot more than $5 million, because Chevron learned and lost money on this. So we did, how many leaks have we found for customers? And I'm not talking about leaks in our lines, I'm talking about customers' line.
It's in the thousands.
And what do you think, as an average, how much money did a customer save by getting to get that leak early?
Hard to say.
But at least, probably a hundred dollars, at least. At least a hundred dollars.
In some cases, it's a few dollars, some cases, it's hundreds of dollars.
But what I'm saying is, we did this for the customer. It wasn't, it wasn't for the 2020 thing. It was for the customer, and it was also to, we just got a good report on workman's comp. If you have a meter reader jumping in and out of a Jeep, driving around in these streets, you're gonna have big claims workman's comp. That's, we are not having those things, because we don't have to have a meter reader out there.
Could I elaborate just a little bit, please?
I don't, I don't think that's appropriate, he's giving his...
When I get through, if you want.
Go ahead.
Okay, and the, the thing, and so I feel that what, what we did at the time was what was best for the district and its customers. And I think we're saving, we're gonna be saving thousands of dollars to our customers because they're not wasting water, and I think that's very important. And now, before, we were reading every two months, so yearly could be 59 days. Now, luckily, it'll be less than a week, even shorter. I mean, we know when you, when you use, when there's water running for 24 hours, we know it the next day. And if that isn't customer service, I don't know what it is. So I think the Chevron thing is a gone thing. No one knew that we were going to go into this thing when we did. I mean, we were, we were going, everyone said, you never lose money on property. There's no such word as never, because you do, you can lose on it. So I think it was just the timing, and like I said, if we had to do it today, it would cost a lot more. As far as, the only thing I would go bad on George on this is, I think his timing for asking this raise was bad. So I would give him a three on this, because he asked for a raise. I understand why he asked for a raise, but I just think the timing was bad.
Can I elaborate a little bit, now?
If you'd like to make a comment, yeah, they keep it short.
Just a couple of the things. I have done a lot of research in looking at different objects in the, in the whole PID, and talking with different people. And as I mentioned, I would have most likely voted for it, because I have 1,500 foot of pipe, and it leaks, and board just brought that out. But there are other ways doing it. Case in point, I don't, would work in paradise, there are cities that do this type of a thing, and lo and behold, they have the reader on the side of the garbage truck. And as the garbage goes down the street, picking it up, it's all on there, the driver doesn't even know it's there, it senses it. So there's all kinds of different ways of doing it. And I wasn't being critical on it, but I was being critical, you see? But I just happen to agree with Hall, said have it come out of the sky.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I interject a comment?
Sure.
I'm just trying to help speed up the process and how inform you people. You're evaluating me and my performance. Everybody here should know, my job as a district manager is to present budgets, ideas, potential projects to a five-member board of directors. I don't decide if we do meter projects, I don't decide if we do administration buildings, I don't decide if we build a new corporation yard. Yes, I think they were all great projects, that's why I presented them. If you're evaluating my performance, the metering project is a project that was presented to a board of directors, the board of directors approved it, it's been a great project. What you guys don't see or hear every day, the customer service people answering phones. And when they explain to the customer about their usage, what time of day that usage is occurring, how much the leak is, I mean, there's people that, they have a leak, and when they call the office, our customer service people are smart enough to walk them through it. Well, that's about a quarter of a minute leak, something you need to keep an eye on, check your toilets, they give them a list of things to check, but it's not worth spending $200 to have a plumber come out and find at this point. It's been a great, it is probably, it's an expensive project, but it is the most effective customer service project that our customers feel. And so, I just want to remind you, my job is to present ideas, budgets, proposals to a board of directors. It is ultimately their decision to decide if we proceed or we don't proceed.
Absolutely. Thank you, George.
I'll move on to number two, if you'd like, President Corolla, it's short.
Yes, Director Flesher?
Okay, performance management, it's item number two, and I guess it's the next one down on here. For my short time viewing this area, and I've been doing quite a bit of it as I can, I realize that the PA Day has a lot of projects going on, and the staff appears to be on top of these projects, even considering there are vacant positions, as I understand it. But our staff is doing an excellent job, and I will have to say it's a dotty because of George's leadership. And I have a four on that one.
So that was number two, performance management. Okay, Director Hunt?
For the list of...
You're okay. Picked you up a little heavy there.
Yeah. For the list of performance management bullet points, for those that are interested. I just agreed yes with all of them. Does the decision-making process rely on objectivity and facts? Yes. Are activities managed on a timely basis and concluded effectively? Yes. Is there a philosophy and associated action of continuous improvement? Yes. Are employees used effectively? Yes. Are strategic planning concepts used? Yes, they are. I rated, my comments for publication are that George effectively real allocates assets to address appropriate opportunities that arise, which provide more benefit to the district than previously planned projects. He's not a stick in the mud, he'll take advantage of opportunities when they arise. I rated him 5.0 on performance management.
Thank you, Director Hunt. On the bullet points, first two, I had yes on both of those. Is there philosophy and associated action of continuous improvement? Absolutely. Are the employees used effectively every day? And are strategic planning concepts used? And yes, my rating for him on that is a four. Director Kellogg, we're gonna be skipping over you, so Director Duncan?
Okay. I think this is a very good, I one of him, I do not give five on anything. I never have. I can't understand how people in college can get better than 4.0.
When you get 100%, you're...
That's 4.0.
This is not a four-point system.
I know, but I, I just think that there's, there's always room for improvement, so I'll give him a 4.5.
Would you like for me to go to three?
Actually, I'm gonna start with Director Duncan this time, public service. I'm gonna mix it up and go the opposite direction.
Public service. I think that's great, I thought we always started with Hall, but I like that idea,
I'm just reading the things, I would give him a four on that.
Director Kellogg's not gonna be in there. On public service, I rated George a five. His communication skills with the public, with the board, with the employees, legal, staff, everybody. You might not always agree, I think we said earlier with what George is saying, but I guarantee he communicated it to you in a way that you understood what you were up against. So, communication, or, excuse me, on public ser, that was communication, on public service. I did, I'm sorry, it's just been a long night. Public service, I still gave him a five, because yes, he's still with the public, and that is communicating to the public, too. I gave, I dropped both mine in there at the same time.
You got it, you took a head start. On the bullet points for public service, are the needs of customers affected agencies and concerned members of the public effectively understood and addressed? Yes. Is there adequate communication with these district customers about the process and information needs? I said yes, but I also put down that I think we need to have more effort in that area. Do employees have a positive customer service attitude and approach? Yes, they do. Thank goodness for our employees. And the last one, are employees trained in customer service? They are, and they're trained again and again, and they do a great job. In regard to the numerical awarding, I put 5.0. My comment is, this is the job. He always has the long-term best interest of the district, and therefore the public, in mind. When planning... and therefore the public in mind when planning and making decisions. He is not just a caretaker of the status quo.
On item number three, public services, staff development. Since I've been out in the community a lot and since I've been elected, I've had quite a number of people, even today, that I'll allude to a little later. I was giving a speech across the road to the Sers. But I've had people come up to me on the street, in a grocery store, or church, and other places I go and have nothing but top comments to make about our staff that we have here. One of them was in fixing a pipe. I shared this back here. A good friend of mine has erected metal buildings all over the North State, hundreds of them. And he made a comment that the staff that we have working up here is just outstanding as far as working with and being underneath there. His name is Mike Boggs, and he works for the company that erects these type of things. And so I compliment you, and I've stated that in a public meeting and in here. And I know George has done a lot in the public service area. I'm sure that any time, and I've been up to the treatment plant and the staff development there, thanks to Jim and George and other people, is second to none. And I... you know, I've been in my... I'm in my 55th year teaching, and I give a lot of As, and I'm gonna give a five on that one.
Thank you, Director Fleischer. And I'll let you start again.
And I could tell you exactly why I did it, George. Gotta be out there leading the charge, okay?
What was his score?
Five.
Five.
And then criteria number four, I'm gonna start with Director Hunt this time.
We already got you.
Yeah, I know. I kinda spoiler on that one, but I do have a comment.
Communication, is there an atmosphere of open and honesty? Openness and honesty, yes. Is there a high standard of quality for district letters and analytical reports? Yes, there is. Are there adequate efforts to keep the board, employees, and the public informed of pending issues and activities? I said yes, but kind of like I did up in public service, they're pretty darn close. I said, "We need more there," George. Are there good overall communication skills? Yes. Is there a high level of internal and external communications? Yes, there are. In regard to the actual rating of communication, my comment is, George is always forthright and clear with his information provided to the board and to the public. Rating five.
Okay, Director Fleischer?
On the number five, communications. District Manager Barber has a very accomplished style of communication skills in order to reach a varied audience. And I've listened to him present to different groups of people, and his communication skills are excellent. And I put a four on that one. Because there's always room to improve, George.
And Director Duncan?
Yeah, I think this is... he's very good at this, and I wish I was as good. A 4.5.
Okay. And I'm gonna read Director Hall, the comments from last year. Director Hall commented that whenever there's been an issue, District Manager Barber has gone to the limit to make sure all pages are turned and questions resolved. President Hunt indicated it is the responsibility of the district manager to style his communication in order to be able to communicate to various levels of people that are receiving the information. I kinda gave it as a spoiler, but that's exactly what I was saying. George can communicate with the public and his workers and his staff and supervisors and legal. And there's a vast majority of other people that George communicates out there with, as well as a lot of people in the water business. And he always... I think everybody always knows exactly what he's talking about. And so I gave him a five on communication. The next one's gonna be leadership, and I'm gonna start with Director Fleischer.
Thank you. Under leadership, District Manager Barber appears to work within the district chain of command. In other words, like, I'm sure that he doesn't run up in the building up here or out here on the leak. If the supervisor is there, whether it's Keith or whoever it is, they go over his head. I don't think you do that. At least, they haven't told me that you did that, which is a good feature. However, 1:00, across the street, I just finished a presentation to the Sers. And I had six people out of the audience, because I was introduced as a duly-elected board member to this here. They came up, and a couple of them questioned your leadership on the timing of your proposal for your raise. And I didn't say anything. I just said, "He apparently feels he's worth more money." And apparently, there's some other people here the same way. I didn't say my thoughts on it or whatever. So I'll agree with Director Duncan that I think your October timing of this perhaps was in poor taste. And I think this kinda shows it out here, but maybe it was in good taste. Who knows? But I want a three.
Okay, on leadership.
Just after my lunch speech.
On leadership, okay. Director Hunt?
On leadership, there are a lot of bullet points. Fortunately, they're not very wordy. Is there a well-communicated agency vision? Yes, there is. Has internal and external support been developed to accomplish the mission? Yes, it is. Is there participation in community activities? There are. I invite him to Rotary. He comes there every year. Is there a reputation of openness and integrity? Yes, there is. Is there a good effort to be personally informed? Yes, there is. Are employees generally satisfied with the district manager's leadership and management? I find they are. Are crises situations managed effectively? George is terrific in a crisis. Are there good efforts toward teamwork and collaboration? Yes. Are interpersonal relationship skills good? Yes. Are negotiation and conflict management skills utilized, being on the Personnel Committee and the Administration Committee? I've seen that, and they certainly are. Under leadership, I rated... the comment I have is that George stimulates his subordinate managers to use their skills and intelligence to better serve the district. He can and does delegate authority. I rated him a five on leadership.
Thank you, Director Hunt. In an effort to conserve some time tonight, he does a great job with leadership, and I gave him a 4.5 on that one. Director Duncan?
I, same thing, 4.5.
Okay. We'll start back with you, Director Duncan. We'll move back this direction. Legal compliance?
I don't know that this is his job. I think he...
We gonna rate Dustin over there?
I think, yeah, right. I think we... he probably... I'll give him a 4.5 because he got Dustin.
I gave him a four on this because I'm coming in the same boat with you, where I believe it's his job and he will take the final brunt of it. We have legal counsel, and we have Jim Passanese up there. Passanese up there that's taking care of our legal and our required testing that we have to do on our water and so forth. And so that is part of our legal compliance also. So I gave him a four on that. Director Hunt?
Legal compliance, are state and federal laws, mandates, and regulations adhered to? Yes, they are. Is there compliance with district policies and regulations? Every time I've seen this come up, George is always able to point to what he did and reference it to the policy. You guys think, "I did this." Well, there it is in the policy. You gave me that authority. Or, "No, why would I do that? Here's the policy. It says you don't do that, so I haven't done it. You were misinformed, and we move on." The answer is yes, he does. Are agreements and other employee relations, laws, and regulations communicated and enforced? The answer is yes. In regard to my comments, I said there's none better that I've seen in all of my career in working at major corporations of a CEO, a manager, in regard to legal compliance, especially with as complicated as it is here. I know when I first came on the district, I was confused by all this stuff. And every time, I'd say, "Well, let's do it this way." George would tell me, "That's illegal." And it took a little while to train me into this. But, you know, things come up. I'm asking questions about it. And George says, "Well, here's why we have to do it this way." And I said, "Well, that's dumber than a box of rocks." But that's the law. So maybe I shouldn't have said that, but that's what we do, is we comply with those dumb box of rocks laws. He has intimate understanding of law and with regard to district operations, he keeps us safe. And then we have the security of our legal counsel, which is so close at hand and used extensively. I rated George with a five.
Under legal compliance, I put down here, District Manager Barber and all board members appear to have open access to legal counsel, which is very good in regards to legal compliance. And as you most likely have figured out, we have a lot of legal things that we have to abide laws and various other jurisdictions. And I would like to take this opportunity, I was gonna do it after our last meeting, to compliment our counsel, Dustin. I've worked with a number of attorneys over the years on a number of activities, and I'm really impressed with your... the way you handle yourself. Very professional, and we're very fortunate. And I guess it's George's leadership that got him here. So two hordes at the same time. Maybe Kevin... Kevin, did you have anything to do with that? Well, anyway, George, good job.
Sure.
How many water agencies... because I had a couple of people ask me, "How many water agencies does your firm handle?" 60?
Thereabouts.
Thereabouts 60. And I know a couple of other managers at water agencies that he serves, and they speak highly to you too, Dustin. So you're gonna keep us out of trouble. But he also gets paid quite well, too, I might add.
So your rating?
Five. I'll give him an A on that one.
Thank you, Director Fleischer.
It did go to an A.
Kevin, if I could have the average tally for each item? Larry's been keeping track too, so I know.
Oh, no, I didn't do the averages.
I do. I'm gonna be checking you, Kevin.
Criteria one, 3. Criteria two, 4.375. Criteria three, 4.75. Criteria four, 4.625. Criteria five, 4.25. And criteria six, 4.625.
You were only wrong in one of them, Kevin.
We need to nod it.
The first one. It's 3.5. We demand a recount. Check the Chad.
So pretty much consistent with last year.
What was the last one, 4.25?
4.625.
I would like to suggest that we look at this before next year. I guess we'll be doing this in July, if I read this right, if things pass, and go on a 1/10 scale. That way, we won't have everything up in the As, you see. So we might wanna visit that, but at another evening.
Larry does it by given decimals. 4.5 is a nine.
Yeah, but 1 to 10 is easier. 55 years of grading people, okay?
There may be some disagreement on the process. Before we get to that point next year, we'll talk about... Put an agenda item for you to develop, change, do whatever you would like with the process.
That's why I mentioned it.
Exactly.
And I do that, it would happen.
Thank you, George. Okay. So I jumped the gun once again earlier. It's been a long evening. But we are... we didn't have a closed session, so we're gonna skip items three and four.
President Crowell?
Yes.
If I may have the opportunity to speak, I'm going to speak on the previous agenda and the next agenda item in one spot.
That was... okay. That would be...
That's okay with you?
That would be just fine, yes. That's why I was asking you earlier, but I know you wanted to wait until you were...
Cue your camera. I don't have anything prepared tonight, but I do wanna address some things to all of you and to the board. First of all, in the performance, I very much appreciate the board's efforts at evaluating me and your kind comments and your criticisms. We'll all be taken to heart. Appreciate that. I'll address a couple of things. What a great country and state we're in. This is California. So my job as district manager, I get to present myself and justify it in front of the entire world. Where else could we be then? I don't see a lot in other districts, but here we are, and I welcome it. The reason I presented this in October, I said it then and I'll repeat it. We had a director that was leaving. He had been here when I was hired. Director Fleischer was gonna be elected, and it was a difficult spot to put a new director in. And the other issue was, I had backed up... Well, let me just back up, tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in Eugene, Oregon, but I found myself in paradise at 4 years old. I spent my life here. I care about this community. I care about this district. And I came here in 2004. I took a cut in pay. Why? Because I wanted to better my community. I wanted to take back the next leap to be a district manager. And I wanted to have... give something back to my community. So I took that cut in pay, and just so you know, it was for self-help. And if I'd been in the same position that I left and never left to come work for this community, I'd be being paid more. I'd be in perks. I'd probably be in an even better position. Maybe not. I'd take that leadership role. So at some point, this is the only way this works. And so I have to put a proposal out, and I made discussions about retirement and planning and aging, putting that in my head. But that's what went into me in my proposal. But I did take a backseat for many years as allowing the board to get their full negotiations with union members and management group without trying to set a precedent one day, one way or another. I went, all of those years, this was not quite a form of a performance evaluation. What you saw in the packet was very similar. I gave a memo highlighting the district's accomplishments, what I had proposed to work on in the future and the status of what I'd said the past year. That presentation was made. The board of directors hashed it out. Many times, I wasn't even in the room. Call me back in. This is what we're offering. Did we ever negotiate? We never negotiated. I thanked them and went on. Get the job next day at work. Tomorrow, whatever happens tonight, I'll be back at work at PID doing my job. That's what I do. These five board members are entrusted to do all of the homework, the many hours of work and learning this district, learning how it operates, doing their homework to make decisions. This decision tonight is no different than any of the others. Put my cards on the table and make my recommendations. They discuss it, they work it through, and ultimately, they make decisions. That's how it works. So whatever the number is, however we end this up, you will still get my full attention, my many, many hours a week. No, I don't spend 80 hours an hour. But I'm here in paradise. You can ask my wife about how my head's been doing. So... But in the end, don't treat me in bad debt. This is my job. This is how this process works. I made a presentation. I think it's consistent with many agencies in the state. We are not perds. Every time I get a paycheck, you people's full retirement obligation to me is met. When you go over to an agency that's in perks, they're not making the returns in perks that are required. They're on the hook for many, many years. There is a potential for a health retirement benefit here. We're not perds. We set our own rules. I will have to be working here on 62 to achieve retirement health care. And it will last until I reach Medicare age. Not until I die, like many other public leaders. It's a different animal here. So I think you guys should be aware of that and understand it. That comes in part of the calculation that these guys have to undertake and know. So they don't just represent you folks here. There's 26-plus thousand people that drink our water every day that they're responsible for. So they have to make decisions tonight and every night about that. I wished we would get this kind of participation all the time. We had a mid-year budget review. We had a mid-year budget review last week. Have you listened? It's a great meeting, because I turn it over to my people. They get to tell the board what they did over the whole year. They're very proud of the work they do. You get a financial update, mid-year budget review, and it's all part of the puzzle of what we do. So, more public involved, the better as far as I'm concerned. I hope you continue to visit us as we go forward. We have a huge decision ahead of us about drought supply. We still are very, very much exposed to drought and cutbacks. So I've brought forward a couple of options and we're developing them and they have a lot of work ahead of them, but if you go to our website, I made a presentation in January, take a look at it. That's a tough decision this board has to make. I won't have all the solutions for it, but I did my best to bring as many options as I could. Last thing I want to say is, one of my main jobs here is leadership. We have an absolutely fantastic crew of people. They make my job easier. They do, because they put a lot of effort. My success is their success, their success is my success. And on a little lighter note, I wished I would have gotten a little better mark on financial management, because I did bring Kevin aboard.
Thank you George. Was there anybody from the public that would like to comment at this time about anything? Or, man?
I think Director Clank just canonized George's sector to be changed. I mean, he skipped all the flags, and I wonder how appropriate that is when you're his best.
I think that I'm a very objective person.
I don't think so, not when it comes to George. You don't think you should reiterate something for Dustin?
No.
Okay.
None of those numbers translated into percentages?
They don't.
They don't?
My name's Dan Wentland, and I appreciate very much what Loretta said, because I could not agree more. Speaking from, I think, the ear of the public, nothing against George, nothing against any staff, we all agree that you people have done a great job. I drink the water all the time and love it. In fact, when we travel, I take lunch with me, because it's better than most places taste.
Absolutely.
But the thing that is, I think, critical is that you understand and you get the feeling for what the public is saying right now. The perception is that this is just not a good time. The economy is absolutely in the toilet. Police, fire, you know, Greg at the council level is dealing with this. Everybody's getting less and less, not more and more. And even though he might be worth it, probably is worth it, it's just simply not good timing. And we do need to be responsive to what the feeling of the public is. I know that every person that I have talked to, and I tell you, you guys know me, I'm all over town everywhere and talk to everybody. I haven't found one person yet that thinks that this is a good time for a raise. I think that maybe you could skate by giving them a percent or two or something, but that's, you know, your decision. We have elected you and I think that hopefully you know what our feeling is. Most of us are not cantankerous, critical people. We try to be upbeat people, but I just think it's not a good time for a big raise. It's not, it's not good PR. What's the op, it's not good optics, you know? It's kind of a dumb saying, but that's what everybody is using these days. If the economy picks up, everybody might perceive it a little bit differently. I know that I, I myself wish that I made a third of what he did. I only had four years to college, but, you know, I, and I chose my trade and love it. And when do I get to retire? About three days before they bury me, probably. I just, and I'm sixty-two and I don't see the light of that into that tunnel at all. So it's just, you know, we elect you people, we expect you to make wise decisions, but I think that you've got the feeling for the community. The community is just, make this decision wisely at this time. I don't know how many years it's gonna be until the economy turns around. Nobody does, but it needs to be considered heavily. And again, George, nothing against you at all, not for a second, but I don't, I happen to know another, an engineer friend who would be tickled to take it for substantially less and, but, again, we're not going there. I'm not out to replace anybody. Just be careful, I don't think it's good timing for a substantial raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's been a long time since I've been on the council. Meetings go to midnight. I think I'm going home.
Yeah, thank you Dan. Well spoken. So at this time, it, I'm sorry Ward, I didn't see, stand up there.
Yeah, a point of emphasis, and I brought this up at other meetings, which George just said, too many times, the people will squabble quietly by themselves and not be here to squabble in front of you or whatever board. So I do, I do encourage you. You should be at these things and you should present your, your issues. But I'm also extremely disappointed tonight that there's only four people that were participating in the evaluation. I think that is a disservice of the board and I'm very disappointed.
Thank you Ward.
I'd like to say right now that I'd, I'd like to, and I hope you guys would like to, give George a round of applause for his service. And I can tell you right now, your speech, George, tugged at my heart. I know you're sincere, I know you're a man of your word, and I know you're doing the good job, and I understand that. I just wish that you'd understand that the, that the people out here are broke. And it's just lousy timing and now, I'm really sorry, my mind goes back to when Woody laid off part of the town council. The man had tears in his eyes. He was crying, folks, he was crying. And he says, "I hate to lay you off, but I have to, there's just no money." He was crying, honest to God, I swear, my hand to God. He was crying and, but yet he still had to do the tough thing. And that's what I'd like to see you, you members do tonight, is do the tough, tough thing and hold the line, because the economy's just not there. But as far as George goes, I say, when the money becomes available, give the man the money, he deserves it. The economy's just not there now, that's all there is to it, folks. Thank you.
Thank you Ward. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak before we get to the meat and potatoes of this thing?
Probably sad, can't look forward. I don't doubt, sounds like George is a really excellent man. He did say some nice things about my artwork too.
Yes.
I won't forget that. But I don't think comparison should be made with other districts or anything like that. There's always a place for, you know, like, oh, how much do you make or, or you only get that much because of this or that. That's always an unfair comparison. You know, we're, we're unique, we have to live within our means. And I have to do that, and if I don't, I, I mean, just like everyone else. You tighten your belt, you count your losses and you just, you have to, and be thankful for what you do have. I mean, I've, I've been, you know, Bay Area rates, you know, I've had big price jobs and you live here, you, things are a lot less. We just have, we're a different type of community and we have to live within our means and till things get better, that's just the way it should be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you sir. Okay, so Director Fleischer has left us for a couple of minutes here. I would say we'd call it a recess, but actually I'm just, we're just gonna plow right through this. We're going to keep this ball rolling. So as soon as he gets back here, we're gonna continue on. Anybody else in the public? Any of the directors that had any comments at this point? We got an awful lot of comments tonight, so.
I've got some, but I'll wait.
We're gonna wait until we get into, okay? We'll just take a minute of silence then, I guess.
I've got the same problem, so I might as well go on break.
Well, why don't we go ahead and take a break then until about nine fifty-five? No, really? Okay, we'll reconvene at nine fifty-eight. For this, the real meat and potatoes of this, this is agenda item eight point B. We are gonna kind of go from this, this memo that was prepared by legal counsel, and I'm actually gonna turn this first part over to Dustin to kind of lead us through it.
Sure. Well, this is at ninety-two, page ninety-two Kevin. I've written a memo, basically you have four options. You can accept, you can reject, you can delay, or you could propose a counteroffer. And, just, just briefly, obviously acceptance would be agreeing to what George proposed in October without any kind of changes. Rejecting would be just saying, George, we're not gonna make any changes, your current agreement is what we're gonna continue with. A counteroffer, and delay is obviously delay, a counteroffer would be if you make any kind of modifications to George's proposal. The committee's recommendation is technically a counterproposal, which is significant, because it cannot be imposed on George. This, this is a negotiation, so it's a counteroffer. George then has the ability to consider it and accept it or reject it. If George were to reject it, then he would continue under his current agreement. So I'm, I'm being a little presumptuous, but I'm going to assume that there's probably not gonna be a motion to accept the proposal.
The October proposal.
The October proposal. And I'm also gonna assume there's probably not gonna be a motion to reject it. We're probably gonna be in the counterproposal arena. But if I'm wrong, you, you guys...
Are there any disagreements with that?
I'll make a motion that we reject the offer. See what happens.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion to reject the offer.
I think the committee has agreed with that.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Well, clarify, okay. Rejecting is ending negotiation.
Oh, oh.
That's what I mean by reject. So if the board is interested in making a counteroffer, yes, it's technically a rejection of George's proposal, but you still have more to do.
Okay.
But, Director Kellogg, is that what you meant?
I'm just reading this thing here. The provision of Mr. Barber's current agreement, including current salary level of one hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred retirement health, so, would remain unchanged. Yeah, that's what I meant, in entirety, and boom, that's done.
And end of discussion.
End of discussion. We could bring it up later, I gather, but as far as the current thing and all the stuff, we just reject the offer.
Well, that's not what I thought you meant, so I'm not gonna be seconding that, so. Watt, take a vote, right?
No.
Someone has to second.
If you fail, then it doesn't have to.
I withdrew, okay, good. That satisfies that.
Question. This proposal by the ad hoc committee is actually a counteroffer to...
Yes.
That's our recommendation of a counteroffer.
Yeah, there's a counteroffer, yeah, okay.
Okay, Director Kellogg's motion, dice, relax, I'll second. Hold there.
Well, I move we, I was gonna say accept, but accept or, you know, we'll discuss, but I moved that we, that we accept the ad hoc committee's counteroffer proposal with whatever amendments the board may want to be suggesting and making.
I will second that.
That doesn't make sense.
Well.
It doesn't make sense.
It's open for discussion now, you can always amend.
So that means the motion is in there, and if we make changes to it, you're gonna, then it's gonna be in the old motion.
Well, yeah, you'll make amendments to it.
This is actually kind of a variance of what...
Now, the way that I understand it is that you move that we accept this as it is.
Right.
And if you want to change it, make an amendment.
Which is a counterproposal.
Then make amendments.
And if we wanted to change it, we would have to move to amend.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll cover that, we'll cover that base.
Looking at this one here, which is up on the wall, for those in the audi, for those in the audience, we have eleven areas that they're talking about here, one and two, and then A B through I, I guess H I on here. And there's several in there that I would kind of look at. One of them is perhaps a beautiful truck that's out there for a hundred dollars a month, and I don't know how much he drives it and all that, but I certainly don't want him to have to drive his own vehicle for ten feet on PID business, that's the way I feel. But I'd like to move back up to item number C.
President, is it all right if I talk about that?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I think it's okay.
That's, good.
That's where we are.
Okay, going through the, going through the past minutes, last year, continued twenty-twelve district manager's evaluation, which is here, I don't know if you can bring it up or not, but there was three votes taken, as I have here. And Director Howell was here at that particular time, so all five of the directors were here. The first one they come out was for a hundred and forty-two thousand. There was discussion and it failed three to two. The next one was by Director Duncan, seconded by Hunt, that it was a hundred and thirty-eight, and that one also failed three to two, with all five directors here. And then further discussion, they went on, and that's when they came up with a hundred and thirty-five, two hundred dollars with a three thousand dollar merit bonus payment. And that passed four to one. In that particular one, you don't have it up there. Well, anyway, what we have here now is it's a twenty thousand dollar raise in pay over last year. Twenty thousand dollars, which would put him fifty thousand dollars higher than the next staff member, which is you Kevin. You're still making a hundred and five thousand dollars, right? Okay, so he would be fifty thousand dollars higher than the next person in line is Kevin. And, that's a horrendous raise in pay on that particular point. Now you told me Kevin, that you figured a salary, you could add fifty percent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that hundred and fifty-five thousand, but let's just keep it a hundred and fifty thousand, would cost the PID another seventy-five thousand dollars. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
Fifty percent of a hundred and fifty thousand is seventy-five thousand.
I just wanted to clarify that on a general basis, you add fifty? I would say probably for George, it would be closer to thirty-five and forty.
Okay.
So, because you have fixed benefits associated with the salary, so on a general basis, we add fifty percent. Lower people, lower wage people, you can actually add up to seventy percent. Higher wage people, it drops down, so.
That's why I wanted you to clarify that. So you say forty or fifty percent though?
Correct.
Okay. Would be in that particular category. I also agree with some of the George, I know Hugh has a little deeper thought on this. Ward, pardon me, had a Hugh there, a friend who looked very similar to you, Ward. PERS. I entered the PERS system in nineteen sixty, and I left it in nineteen ninety-two when I retired from full-time. I always paid seven percent, my districts paid seven percent. I could be, I could make it for another twenty years and they will not owe one penny. It's where districts don't pay what they should into the system, which George talked about in this particular point. I always kind of wondered in the back of my mind why an outfit like PID didn't have PERS. If they did have, in my opinion, since nineteen sixty, I was a bargader and all kinds of stuff, your retirement system, in my opinion, would be considerably better on here. And I think George agrees with that, because he'd love to have a PERS system to work under. And I'll vouch for that, with having all that time into things. So, that's what I'm wondering, why is, why do we, I don't know, why do we want a twenty thousand dollar raise in pay? Now, I can understand why you do, George, on this particular point, you know? But anyway, that's, that's my question. And I'm having a hard time swallowing that, where the next employee is fifty thousand dollars under March first, if we vote for this, you see? Because Kevin is a phenomenal individual and a great treasurer, and George, I'd raise your score if I'd knew you hired me and I should have taken that one out, you know? But if Kevin would be wanting a raise, you know?
Would you like to make an amendment to the suggested?
Well, I'm not ready to make an amendment. I'm just putting my points out there. Why, why, that's an excessive raise, in my opinion. Next.
We went three years without giving him an increase in his base pay.
I understand that. But during that three years, he had a ten thousand dollar bonus, a five thousand dollar bonus, and a three thousand dollar bonus, plus another three thousand dollar bonus on here. So he did have a raise in pay. You paid income tax on it, but that didn't go into your base salary for your retirement, did it?
Correct.
So, but you did pay income tax on it.
And that's, that's why when we move like a rubber band into catching up, the next increase looks so big. This twenty thousand dollar increase would be fourteen point six four percent of his current income. The twenty thousand dollar increase also represents approximately one quarter of one percent of our seven point two million dollar a year annual budget.
Comments from any other directors? Larry's doing some math.
Yeah, fourteen point eight, yeah. Well, I have a whole bunch of comments about the... Well, I have a whole bunch of comments about the ad hoc suggestion, committee suggestion. My first question... Do you want me to ask them? My first question is, why are we changing the...
Should we vote on this and then create a new proposal, a new motion?
It sounds like we've got to amend it.
Yeah.
You can leave it on the table and just amend it.
Yeah. Okay, here's mine. Okay, the first reason, why is the committee suggesting changing the name?
The title?
Yes.
To me, more descriptive of the overall general manager responsibility. Many of the comparisons we looked at were called general managers. There were some... District manager basically comes from an irrigation district, I think.
Okay.
Just so that it would be more descriptive for...
Not irrigation district, no. Not really.
Yeah.
We aren't really.
Okay, and two, I agree with...
So that was two, A through I?
No, no, no. Two, the... I agree with two. I agree with two only. It says that's two is one thing, then two A is another. Two is we propose to modify the existing... We propose...
As follows.
Oh, as fol... Okay, I read it.
I thought it was... I thought it said we weren't going to do the perpetual, we're going to stay with the other. Okay, so forget two. Okay, then two A, effective date. What is management's effective date? I mean, on the effective date, I'm agreeing with. Okay, what... I'm disagreeing with the amount of money for many reasons. Let's see. And C, I'm disagreeing with two. And change the annual review date. What... D. Is other management at that date?
Yeah, that's...
Yes.
At July?
Evaluation?
Contract.
Based on the hire date, it goes all over the place.
Oh, it goes all over the... So why are we changing it?
Because that's the contract date, when we negotiate with IBEW, when we negotiate with the management unit.
Okay.
And if there are going to be COLA increases, you know, that... All of that, I just think it would be better to get George to go in with that adjustment.
Well, I disagree... I don't think... I don't feel that his classification should be compared to the union classification for several reasons. One, if he's compared with it, then he can't be in negotiations at all, because then it would be a conflict of interest. Because if he's negotiating for them, and he's going to get the same thing, then he can't be in negotiations. That's the way I look at it.
He can, but you're correct.
To me, it doesn't look good.
You're correct.
Okay. So that's the reason I don't like the EBEW, whatever it is, the thing. Let's see. And I'm against the new rate... The new ra... Rate? Is that what it's called? E? What's E?
Merit.
Yeah, no, not merit. It's the range.
Range is on...
B.
Range is B.
B.
B? Okay, I'm against giving him a new range, because if he had gotten a range originally, he would already be topped out. Management tops out after five years, and all they get is a COLA. So giving him a merit increase every year isn't fair... I mean, automatic merit increase is not fair. I think, being a manager, that he... Because he's not with EBEW...
We're not recommending a merit increase automatically every year.
I thought I saw it down there.
No.
Though may receive...
He may be...
If he gets a satisfactory...
Director Duncan, are you looking at the revised committee recommendation? Because that was one of the things that I recommended changing.
Oh, okay. I don't know which one I'm looking at.
It's the revised one.
The revised one. Okay.
Here's the one that printed tonight.
That's under E. E, I think, is what you're talking about.
If I could summarize it now, the... A satisfactory or greater evaluation from a majority of the board only requires that an agenda item be placed on the next available board meeting. It could be that board meeting.
Doesn't automatically...
To consider. Also, all we're committing to is considering a merit increase. It's not going to be automatic.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, I'd go along with that. Now, also, too, I've been looking at the social security COLA. And I see in this one, you've changed... Somehow you guys changed to that.
Well, because that... Largely because of the city of Bell legislation.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
Because that one, the law will allow us to use an automatic COLA increase, automatic, if it is tied to a cost of living index, and no more than the cost of living index.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, let me pass... This is what I came up with, and I... I got... Pass them down. There's enough for... There's enough to pass them all the way around. Yeah. I had... She made seven of them for me, yeah. But what it is, is this is... I didn't agree with you guys, is the way you came up with what he should deserve raise-wise. And the way I came up with is, the first five years, if he'd have gotten what everyone else got, everyone else in management, he'd have gotten seven percent, seven percent, seven percent, seven percent, and seven percent. And then, for two years, he'd have gotten nothing. And then, if you go to the social security COLA, he'd have got three point six, and then you go to one point seven. And that would give him... At one point seven, that would give him a hundred and... What is it? Hundred and thirty-seven-five. And so that's where I... That's where I don't agree with him should be making a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Yeah.
What did your... Well, the maximum...
That's because we calculated on the IBEW.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you didn't do it right, because IBEW doesn't get a merit re-increase for more than... For that many years.
Yes, they do.
Not many... Okay, management doesn't.
The step increase.
Management doesn't.
Can I clarify on both of those? The IBEW gets a step increase for ten steps.
Right.
So however that works out, they get ten steps within their range. Each step is a...
But if they got four percent each time, they reached the top before they got ten, right?
No.
Well, they wouldn't...
Each step is a four percent increase.
Okay.
So each... They get ten steps within their range.
Management only gets five.
No. Management is discretionary.
Yeah.
Management has a range, and the range is discretionary based on how they move up and based on their performance. There's... You can get three. You can get seven. You can get five. You can get four. It's discretionary based on your performance. That is based on management's discretion. But there's a range associated with that, and that range varies based on each position, based on how the board has adjusted those ranges over time. So some ranges have larger spreads, some ranges have smaller spreads, based on how the board has adjusted those ranges over the time of those positions.
Is twenty an average?
No. Actually, an average is close to thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah, percent spread. But that's also, I don't know technically where they started at, because a lot of times you don't always... You never really adjust the bottom. You always adjust the top. So these people have ability to range to more. So the spread becomes bigger.
Oh, they don't bring the bottom up, huh?
They've negotiated in the past. You've held the bottom and moved to the top.
So those ranges spread.
Right. So if you're a new employee, you start a lot lower.
Correct. But then they have a broader range...
They have more room to grow in.
To go, to grow, exactly. So just to clarify that, there's not a... An actual date or time or percentage based on management on how they grow. They can grow quickly, they can grow slowly. It's just based on discretion. But there is a range. There's a high and a low, and they can't get above the high, and they can't go below the low.
Right. I tried to get three people who have been... I tried to get three people who have been here since George has, that hadn't been reclassified, to find out what their range was, but it turns out there aren't anybody like that.
It's very difficult.
That's why when, you know, instead of trying to deal with something that could be nebulous and that we would be creating a range, it's difficult to go, at this point, and say, let's create a range. That's why we have this in there as item two B is to say, well, let's establish a range. Maybe we should have done that, or whoever was here when George was hired back in two thousand and four. But because there was no range established, all I did was say, okay, well, if we would have considered that to have been the bottom of the range, and if we were doing it on a ten-step increase, because we had a history of that with the IBEW, that was why I took that, because it wasn't me inventing something. It was just taking a tool that was already there and saying, okay, well, then this is how his salary would have increased. And then, once we got to that big number, the hundred and sixty-six thousand or whatever it was, then we talked about what would we do now? What do we think the range should be? If we were going to hire somebody in, where would we look to hire them? So that's why we came up with it. You know, it was just our best shot at that, trying to rework this thing from that angle.
Okay, well, basically, I'm against a range for the manager, and I'm against a raise to one fifty-five. Not that I don't think he's worth it.
Well, I would like to see the public, who's going to come in here voluntarily in one year, or a year and a half, or three years, or two years, and say, hey, economy is good. Let's give George a twenty-five thousand dollar increase to catch up for what we told him. We didn't give him an increase for three years. We didn't give him an increase this year. Now let's go ahead and give it to them. I'm here to say, let's start banging the drum for George. The public will never come in and do that.
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to see that during our term here as director.
I don't think the public should be insulted. Excuse me.
That's what I think about the public.
I have nothing but the highest praise for the public myself, and I've been working with them for quite a number of years, and I haven't met one of them yet that wanted to see George or anyone else take a deduction in pay, but they still want it to be kept in the right perspective. And so let Kellogg talk next, I guess, or somebody.
Whoever you want for all of them.
I'll put my two cents down. Go ahead, and that's your turn, Bill. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, failure by any member of the board or directors to provide an evaluation employee by July first of each year will be construed to the equivalent of vote of a satisfactory values employee. I don't think that should be in there. I don't know what it's there for.
There's precedent for that.
I think we heard from the public on that just recently, about ten minutes ago, fifteen minutes ago.
Were you asleep?
They did...
Oh, now it's not good, huh?
No, I already gave my evaluation, and if you put my point would be, if you put my number of one all the way across, it would have... It wouldn't decrease it by one. It just wouldn't have any effect on it. I think the system... I'm glad that George suggested changing it for next year, because I don't think it's a good system. Okay, social security. Modify the vehicle provision. That's one I have problems with, and people complain to me about. I think there should be some sort of limit. I don't think it should be employee just can drive the truck, go wherever he wants to, and only pays for the gasoline and oil that goes into the truck. I would rather see the employee pay what is... What's mileage now, Larry, for tax purposes?
Fifty-five point five.
Okay, so...
For last year.
Yeah, okay.
For last year retire.
Well, have him pay the equivalent to what the government allows for use of a vehicle for tax deductions. So have him pay fifty-five cents a mile from last year. And drop the hundred dollars per month for employees paid to compensate for personal use of the vehicle, and have him pay mileage.
You're talking about not on a normal weekend, Saturday thing, but if he uses it to go on a trip?
Yeah, if he uses it to go on a trip, not commute. The other district employees have the ability to commute between home, be on call, and use their vehicle, but they don't have the ability to take it anywhere beyond that, that I'm aware of. So I'm saying, since George is the manager and gets some extra privileges, he should pay mileage for the vehicle. I think that's fair to the district.
Only on a trip, or like, let's say he wants to run down to Costco?
Well, it's going to be on George's back to decide which it is, because nobody else is going to be running around checking his mileage and deciding how to use it.
So it'd be kind of a hard number to check.
Yeah, so I just say that mileage charged, fifty-five cents, and leave it up to George to report it. If it gets out of hand, well, it gets out of hand.
Before you jump forward, Bill, if I may, just to cover the vehicle section, just sort of get my two cents on...
Sure.
A couple of things that you may or may not know. I have to pay an imputed value... I have to pay taxes on the imputed value of personal use. So what they do is they take a lease. Kevin figures out, so I pay taxes on the lease equivalent of that vehicle annually. So I will be paying somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four grand a year in taxes for use of that vehicle. If you add a hundred dollars, that's some more. I just also want to remind you that when this was decided, and the public may not be aware of this, I got a few extra copies. The reason this was brought forward is because the district gets a heck of a bargain on vehicle purchases. And I was given four hundred and twenty dollars a month to use my own vehicle. And so we did a calculation that... An estimate. It turned out, based on an estimate, that it would be cheaper for the district to provide me the vehicle than it would under the previous arrangement. And so I just brought an update to that. You guys can spread around and see what I have if you want.
Isn't there a cheaper way to do it for IRS? For everybody?
Not with what... With the end restrictions. I mean, there is restrictions on it with the openness of the personal use, that instead of doing it with an actual cost associated with it, it's just easier to do it.
I thought there was some... I don't have anybody that has their own vehicle, but I... It seems like in my seminar, there was some way that employees who didn't want to keep records or anything, they came up with something that isn't the lease thing that would get the employee out of having to pay that much taxes.
Like a rounded mileage figure or something like that?
It was so much... I think it was so much a month they had to pay the employer.
I think that's kind of what Ken came up with.
So, at any rate, is this the Kelly Bluehook private party value of the vehicle nineteen months later is worth more than what we pay for it, tax included? Just so you're aware of that. Doesn't have a lot of ton on it. So my counterproposal for that item would be that language be added to the contract that says that the district manager may cease personal use of the vehicle at his discretion. And then, at that point, I would be driving it toward just like everybody else.
What... If you had to pay the hundred dollars, couldn't you deduct that from what you have to add to the added value?
to add to the added value?
Probably.
Yeah. So, that may be, there may, I'm pretty sure there's a simplified method on it. I never studied it that much, but I, I'll go home and look at it, but it seems like there's a simplified, a way to get out, satisfies IRS, and gets out of having to keep track of everything.
If you find something new?
Yeah, I will.
Because this is the way you get out of it without keeping track of everything, because you have to view the value.
Oh, is that true?
Because you're, what you're doing is you're giving them a benefit that's not cash benefit, so you have to associate that benefit with, with grossing up the wages of that benefit, so that the IRS feels like they're taxing all of the benefits associated with this draft. Because if you're not, you're, you're basically siphoning benefits to him without, with circumventing taxes.
But commuting is not considered a benefit?
Commuting is a benefit, and there is a, there's an imputed charge that we charge all employees that take their truck from here to their, from here to their house and park it, and it's three dollars a day.
Okay, maybe that was what I.
But, that's a restriction, they cannot, all they can do is commute from work to home, work to home. If they were able to have ultimate use of that vehicle, that would not work. So, that's where that three, we have a three dollar a day charge.
Oh, okay. That may have been what I was thinking.
That take their vehicle home.
And, I don't know, Lauren, I think we should probably get through this before we have any more questions, do you have something that's?
I just have one comment. I'd like to ask the directors, please, that's a PID truck, I'd like to see the plastic logos on it like any other PID truck. He has, he has, he has magnet ones and he doesn't use them, and I, I feel that you guys, if you're going to rewrite this, you should rewrite him so that it has the PID logo on the side of the truck. Thank you.
I think we've had reasons for that in the past, that we made those decisions, so. So, really, should we go back up to, have we finished A, B, C, D, E on here?
I go to one, and I'd say, keep him a district manager. I said that in my talk too, so, instead of giving him district general manager.
Okay, so we want to retain, I, I want a consensus, if we're going to make an amendment to this, I want someone to make an amendment, and we agree to it, on each one of these items. If we're going to pick this apart, let's do it the right way, and let's start at the top, and.
Yeah, okay.
Pick it on down, so, for.
We're going to vote on each one, then? To see, I mean, take a poll?
Really, is that the only way?
Take a poll?
Can we take a poll and agree to the amendments made?
Well, why don't, I, my personal opinion is the easiest way to do this is to get rid of the motion that's on the floor.
That's.
And then just divide and conquer.
That's what I was asking earlier, so.
I, I, I just see this getting really complicated with amendment after amendment, personally.
Okay, we were.
And you could do it that way.
What we were trying to do though is get a poll to come up with the amendment.
Yeah, I mean, and then one amendment, so.
Yeah, and one amendment.
And then somebody narrates everything.
Right.
And you're going to, you're taking a straw poll.
We'll be here till four, we'll be here till four AM at that point.
We probably will anyway.
Bite your tongue. Okay, so, let's take a vote on the motion at hand, if can we, that's going to be, Georgia Anna, you're that far back, we have what we originally was motioned there?
It was to accept the.
To accept the committee's counteroffer proposal, with amendments the board may want to suggest, seconded by Director Corolla, which was named Director.
Oh, yeah, you did mention amendments in your motion.
We have no amendments on the floor on this.
No, we don't.
Okay, so if we vote yea or yes.
It's all over.
We would accept this report as presented. No, we will, we will accept, not accept it as, at all.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Okay, roll call vote?
Director Clusher?
No.
Director Haddish?
Yes.
Director Kellum?
No.
Director Duncan?
No.
President, Corolla?
No. Okay, so that is one yes and four nos. Majority has it, and we will be getting rid of that motion. So, would any director like to propose a different motion related to the manager's agreement, or a variation of the committee's recommendation? This could be where maybe we could just go through and.
I know, that's why I handed this out for people who.
Instead of amending it, correct?
Yeah.
Instead of, instead.
The floor is open, so if somebody wanted to.
I appreciate Director Duncan's breakdown on this, because I had done some of the same thing, and I came up with a forty-two percent, and, and all of that above, he has forty-six and a forty-eight on that. I also feel that we shouldn't tie him in with the other staff, because to clarify the subject, he is an exempt employee, so we could do this with the car, basically a board, and I've seen this happen other places, can give him the world, you know, and the only thing that would stop is his few people out here, and that's, that's what we could do. I'm not saying we're going to do that, don't misunderstand me, but I've seen that before. I've seen CEOs got a heck of a deal, and, on that, so anyway, going off of this, what I was thinking, I got a note here on it, and I'll just follow on this, last year, they voted in a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollar cost, and that's thirty thousand, still thirty thousand's higher than our next employee, which is Kevin, on here, with a three thousand dollar merit bonus, and I asked George, all of these merit bonuses that they've had over the last three or four years did not go into his retirement system, he went on his spendable money, or whatever he does with it, and he also paid taxes on it. So, I'm going to move on line number C, that we move to have his base pay raised to thirty-eight thousand, two hundred.
One thirty-eight?
That's, we're going to take the three thousand merit pay and lump it into his base pay, which would add to his retirement, right?
Everything else in his current agreement remains the same.
Everything else, yeah, at this point in time. But one of the things I also like about this is we'll go down to G, and the cost of living adjustment, which would be at the end of the month, end of the year, two thousand thirteen, and I like this part of it, the US social security would be the cost of living, and so he would be eligible for a cost of living based on the US social security level sometime towards the end of two thousand thirteen.
Well, actually, it wouldn't take, didn't we decide it'd be Jan, July of?
We haven't decided.
We don't know what.
We haven't decided yet.
You want to move it to the end of the year, is that what you're saying?
That cost of living raise.
Director Clusher, is that a one-time cola, or is that going to be an annual cola?
We talked about this before, I would think that it would be an annual cola.
Okay.
Based on the US social security.
So, you're, you're saying, December thirty-first of two thousand thirteen, the January two thousand thirteen cola would be applied?
Whatever they figure the cola would be for the year of two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, like they do social security.
Just like social.
So, whatever it's.
Whatever it is, you get that in January. I've got, I've got some information, either in this book or this book here, and I think it's like, it varies with fuel and energy, no, food and energy out of it, it's about two point seven, or something, you know, and it varies, and, and you can get all that information. And I really appreciate this, based on the US social security, and I've had some very knowledgeable people make that suggestion to me, that that's how cola should be based. But that's fair to everybody. Did everybody understand my amendment to this?
So, you were proposing.
Yeah, go ahead.
You were actually making a motion.
I was making a.
An amendment.
It's not an amendment, it's a standalone.
It's a motion. It's a standalone motion, that, but then, I suppose we ought to delete, we've actually deleted now the hundred and thirty-two thousand base bottom and the hundred and sixty-five, that's been deleted.
So, as I understand your motion, if I could phrase it, you move increase in salary effective March one, two thousand thirteen, to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, and you also move that the employee shall receive a cost of living adjustment to the cost of living.
In January.
Twenty thirteen, and that would be annually, based on the US social security.
Gotcha.
Okay, that'd be the end. And of course, we realize that that cost of living would then apply to his base pay.
Now, is that also going to be effective March one?
What?
Well, that's the same started in January.
March one, twenty fourteen. The cola would be effective at the end of the year.
January one is what he's proposing.
January one, twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen. Subsequential year after.
In other words, if it costs, you know, cost of living adjustment is what, is to keep him at the same speeding, we're basically giving him a three thousand dollar raise to his base pay, which would bring him up to a hundred and thirty-five, two hundred, and I don't think anybody wants to see George make less money, I really don't, myself, I don't, and, and then.
Starting next year, you get the cola?
He gets the cola, well, he's actually making it this year, but he's not going to spend it till January of next year, because that's what is going to be paid. He would be getting, he would be getting whatever the cola is, times.
Two eleven, it was one.
One hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
We don't know what, we don't, go, it's really plain.
Yeah, right.
Clarification on which cola? It's usually key.
It's the cola that's going to be published by social security at the end of the year for use with all social security applicants effective January first of the following year.
Now, do you use, is, is that what you use, and maybe that's where the committee got it from, for the other staff?
No.
No.
That's negotiated.
That's negotiated.
That might be something we would want to think about, negotiate, but it's a whole and every world, a whole and every world.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
Well, yeah, but you want everything else to stay the same?
I want to make some other changes.
Well, I know, that's what I'm asking.
Make some amendments.
Everything else is null and void, because we've defeated it.
Do Doug's amendment, and then we can make.
No, no.
He's not an amendment, he's a motion.
Motion.
Mine's a motion.
Your motion is just those two things, then?
Because we defeated all the rest of it, but if you want to put the car in, we could add that to the motion, I guess.
Right, well, that's what I thought, you're, you're going to tell us any more of this in your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I've told you two things.
Right.
I've told you the salary range that I'm suggesting, and the basis for the cola, and then I'll go down to the vehicle, and, hmm, I understand this thing, because we do that at the fairgrounds on trailer houses that people live in, and so it's not rent-free, and George is not getting, he has to pay on it. Is it about three thousand, three, four thousand dollars? But maybe Larry will come up, tax guy.
No, I, I will.
Will, will come up with something.
I was confused.
So, I don't know if God, if, if citizens realize that, but you're, we don't get any part of that, the government gets it, George is paying the state government on that one, isn't it?
State, federal.
State and federal, federal.
Yeah.
I know I've had a lot of people talk about the car on this, uh, yeah, I'll leave that in.
Well, I, would it leave the hundred dollar? You're going to have him pay a hundred dollars?
That is a true perk, that this board can give an exempt employee, and that's what we're doing it.
What, no hundred dollar, then?
Yeah, a hundred dollar.
Well, the hundred.
It's like it is.
He pays a hundred, okay, so you want.
That's what you're doing now, right, George?
No, it isn't.
No, this is a change.
Oh, okay, well, then we'll put the hundred dollars into it.
So, you're saying H in, then?
H would, H would stay in.
Stays, H stays in, okay.
Now, that is a true perk that this board can give that exempt employee.
Right.
Anything else is part of your motion?
What about the range? B.
No, we're taking that out.
B's out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Far as I'm concerned.
Okay, what about A?
A's description from district manager to the general manager.
No, effective, effective dates.
Effective date.
That would stay in, because.
That's already covered in C.
Yeah, the, the raise, are the.
It's in C.
What about the, the title?
I can understand why, George is actually a general manager now, really, because you're, you're in charge of everything that's happening.
Okay.
So, he is actually a general manager at this particular time.
Okay.
And, so that would save the save. So, actually, we would have, to my motion, one would be in, uh.
Two H.
Two.
Two G and H.
Yeah, two D?
Two D at one thirty-eight, two.
Yeah, one thirty-eight, two.
Two H.
And then G, right?
But that doesn't begin until January one of two thousand.
Well, no, it begins now, but he's not going to get the money until the year is over with, and they say, okay, in two thousand thirteen, the cost of living was whatever.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing.
We are saying the same thing. I mean, in other words, he's not going to get an advance. In other words, I see the other people that are negotiating, they're actually getting an advance, because we're assuming the cost of living is going to be three percent.
It is.
And it most likely is, okay, but, but you're getting it, and you're getting a make, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, it's good. Yeah, I, CTA, best union in the world, other than for reading the paper, trained me. I spent months off and on down at Burlingame going through management, negotiating project. Well, anyway, does that make any sense?
What about D?
What?
What about D?
D?
In or out?
Oh, I hadn't really, I hadn't really thought about that. I, I would think that we would just have it in January or February, like we've been doing, so that would, that would not be in there.
D would be out, then.
D would be out, then.
Yeah, D would be out, because one of the things, if we evaluated him in July, that would be just a few months from now, and we would have to give him an adjustment of his salary at that particular time.
No, the way this is written.
The way it's written, it wouldn't be till fourteen.
Till the following year, okay.
Yeah.
And the reason that we kind of did that was because if a director came in new.
Yeah.
George's evaluation is in February, it's very hard for you to get up to speed, or whatever the new director is, to get up to speed. By moving it to July, it gives you a better chance to get up to speed.
That's, that's very true. But one of the things that I found getting up to speed, and I'm certainly not there yet, the staff here, at all levels, has really done an awesome job helping me get up to speed, but I've been curious, you know, and I've also had quite a number of years doing this type of thing.
Another director might not be as quick a learner.
That's very true. But I, I learn something new every day, but I keep forgetting, and that's my problem.
Lot to, lot to retain. So, would we like to keep D in? Will you keep D in your motion, then?
D.
D changes his review.
Yeah, changes the review time.
Right.
But there would be no raise in pay.
No raise in pay, but it wouldn't be till fourteen.
Fourteen. I'll leave that in. If you think it would be better, yeah.
But there would be a cola in January.
Right.
A cola in January, and a review.
In July.
In July.
July, yeah, you know, and then the next review would be July of fourteen.
Correct.
Right.
But then it would be on an annual review.
Correct.
I'd like to see E out.
D?
E.
E.
E. I don't think, I don't think we need E or F.
You don't think we need E in there?
I don't think we need E or F in there.
There's already one that addresses it.
Yeah.
In the current contract.
I think there is.
Because we're going to retain all the previous provided.
Georgia Anna, are we throwing you a curve? Okay, well, let's go back over it.
We'll let that.
All this, all this.
We may vote no.
Dustin, read it to us.
Would read it to us.
Okay.
We got it.
Uh, the motion on the floor is to increase the district manager's salary to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, effective March first, two thousand thirteen, to provide for a cola, as specified in item two G, effective immediately, but not implemented until January one of two thousand fourteen. And then items two H, which is the vehicle provision, change the employee's descriptive title from district manager to district general manager, and then lastly, item two D, to change the employee's annual review deadline date to July one of each year, beginning in two thousand fourteen.
Right.
Well, it's going to be in the twenty fourteen, or twenty thirteen?
I, yeah, we could add I, but I is self-scriptive, if you like, but I is all other items in the agreement.
Well, it's not, yeah, but it should be there, because.
Yeah, say, yeah, that would be a good one, because what we're talking about is a severance pay.
Salary ranges out.
Sick leave, that type of thing.
Salary ranges out, yeah, okay.
July one of each succeeding year, beginning in two thousand fourteen.
Vacation.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
And under discussion, I'd like to say that I think Doug has come up with a good compromise and serves the district well and serves the community well, too. George gets very little of an increase. Basically, he gets what he had last year. And I think the rest of it is fair. I didn't realize that George was actually saving the district money with the truck. That was a bone of contention with me. If that's the case, then I withdraw my complaint about that. But I think everything else is fine. I would vote yes.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have it seconded. Public comment? Or there? Yes, ma'am?
Can I just look at this and review this to make sure that I understand it correctly?
Sure.
My understanding here is that A stays in effect. B is eliminated. C is changed to change the salary from one thirty-five, two hundred to one thirty-eight, two hundred, effective three, one. D stays the same. E is eliminated. F is eliminated. G stays the same. H stays the same. And I stays the same.
Right.
I think that's true, Betty.
That's the motion.
John has it.
One question that I have, and the one fifty fonted, uh, or excuse me, the cap wanted, should that cap also increase the COLA? Because if, if it...
It's gone.
There's no cap.
There's no range.
There's no range.
We've eliminated the cap.
Which means when times are good, we can move him to one seventy-five.
And Ward will vote for it. I don't think so, Larry.
Do you want my comment? As I said before, F deals with all five directors participating in the evaluation. And I think that's important. If this were to stand for tonight, those would not be ones, Director Kellogg. They would all be freeze. You see?
I, I just think the number system is upside down. I've told Larry that before. And I just, my problem is I'm out of seed industry, re-rate hybrids and stuff on a numerical system. And it's real easy to juggle those figures. And I, I just, I don't think it's a fair system. Hopefully, we'll change it for the next time.
Next year, we'll use seeds.
We'll bring up a...
Yeah, we'll use seeds.
We'll bring up an agenda item where we change the, where we change that this year.
So, Ward, I agree with you, we need evaluation, but it's just the way we do it.
Was there anybody else in the public wanting to make a comment? Lauren?
Could we just add in about the dispensing on the truck?
No, we didn't.
No.
There are reasons why we don't want that.
Yes.
It's been discussed.
Yes, and decided.
Security reasons. Somebody's going to shoot at you.
I can't imagine.
Let me ask George a question. Do you, see, I've had trucks the same way with those stickers on the side. When you're on business, do you use those stickers? You'd put it someplace and maybe you're a double park or something, like down here along the road with the pipeline.
I use the stickers when I start driving around Magalia Reservoir.
Okay.
If I'm going to go meet a particular customer, I would throw them on there. That's what it's for. So when I'm driving through the forest, basically, people know who I am.
I taught for a number of years in high school that we would drive, use driver's training cars. And us ag teachers would always take the labels off, except for the E plates. A bunch of coaches one time, Uba City, tuck one. And John Hugh said to subtract them all the way to Reno, all over, and every place they stopped, and some of them was the most reputable outfits in the world, they saw Uba City High School on the side of the car. So if you're doing that, I would suggest...
It was done, it was done for a different reason, and I'm sure George can elaborate on it at a, at a different time. We can go into that. Would you like for me to make an amendment that you, that George will have the option to discontinue use of the district vehicle at his, his...
For private use.
For private use at his discretion?
I would appreciate that amendment.
Okay, so...
And he should notify the board.
I'll second that amendment, unless somebody else would like to. Go ahead.
Duncan, Dustin started to say something there.
Dustin.
I, I think George will do this, but he should notify the board if he makes that determination.
Oh, notify, if he does, yeah.
We gave him a fore, we gave him a fore on communic, four point three five seven on communication. I'm trusting that we'll hear that.
Can you repeat that one more time outside?
So the amendment is, George can discontinue personal use of the district vehicle at his discretion at any time. And use it only for to and fro, to and from home.
Or work purposes.
Or work purposes only.
Would that be permanent, or can he go back and forth?
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
I think if George made that decision, it would probably be a, most likely a permanent decision because it would be a, a tax-related decision, so.
Right, right.
So let's take a vote on...
Still discussing it.
Are we still discussing? Did we still have someone?
No, Ken hasn't said his name.
I do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ken.
Well, no, I was just asking.
No, no.
To speak.
Absolutely.
I think the wage increase of three thousand dollars to one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, it's a two point two two percent in, increase. Two point two two percent. That's below the rate of inflation.
No, this is...
We have...
This year's one point seven.
Is this year one point seven?
Yes.
Okay.
That's so security.
That's what I had.
Well, that's what we're using, though.
Yeah.
We're giving a half a percent more.
Whoopie. So you take the I who's saving us like one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year with ideas that are continuing to produce lower cost to the district, and we're giving him a three thousand dollar increase and saying, great. I think it's, uh... I don't think it's enough. I think it is a, not the way that we should be treating this position, and I disagree with it. That's what I have to say on that.
I think, as I remember, the reason we did three on the union was that it was cheaper to give them the money than it was to not. And that wouldn't be the case for George.
I don't know what that means.
Okay. Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
It's easy to exploit a contractual employee.
But he does, I, I'm glad that we're giving, keeping the twelve-month thing. I like that, it's good. I mean, see, there were, we gave him several benefits when we didn't give him raises. And I'm glad we're not trying to remove them.
Plus, we gave him bonuses.
Yeah, we cut, because we, times were really bad.
Yeah.
Then.
They're not, they're not much...
They're not any better than our Q.
No.
I hope the union realizes this, what we're doing, that they're not going to come and ask for seven like they did last year.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on the, if everybody...
In one's other piece?
We're all good. We're going to take a vote on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Director Fleischer?
Aye.
Yes.
Director Hunt?
No.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Director Beck?
Yes.
President Corolla?
Yes.
Four yeses.
George wanted that, Ken. And you wouldn't give it to him.
One no. Let's have a vote on the initial motion as stated by Dustin and, uh...
And amended.
And amended. Motion by Director Fleischer in there. And seconded by...
I don't know.
Larry.
Larry, did you second it?
I guess I did.
So let's do a roll call vote there.
Director Fleischer?
Yes.
Director Hunt?
No.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Director Beck?
Yes.
President Corolla?
Yes. The motion...
I'm sorry, go ahead, finish your thought.
Well, I would say the motion passes four to one, uh, in favor of it. And now don't we have to ask the...
Yeah, so this is technically a counterproposal.
A counterproposal, so at this point...
No, if he wanted to, or he could accept it. You may want to give him a few minutes to consider it, or...
You want to take a final minute break?
Okay, we'll reconvene at eleven oh one.
See, he can come back with a counterproposal.
We'll go ahead and reconvene at this time. District Manager Barber?
Yes.
Have something for us?
I do have a couple of points to make. Hurt the public tonight. This is a horrible process. It's a horrible process that's been set up to put this board through that. When, uh, when you get your drinking water bill from Cow Water, nobody down there gets this opportunity. They pay whatever they want. And they can profit out of every drop of water they sell as well. Weird that we have different processes in this same state. But it is what it is. I do also want to make a point, so the public's aware, this is no increase. This is a zero increase proposal. Last year, this would be the exact same amount of money I made last year. But at the interest of what the public had to say, what this board has had, had to go through, I'll accept it.
Okay. Well, we got a couple more items.
Oh, that's right.
We aren't quite there yet, Bill, but...
Put my machine away.
Forgot all about that.
I'll be right on your coattails, so don't, don't let me run you over if I'm going to... Okay, George, thank you. Your continued hard work and service to this district, I don't know if these people will all realize it, but the people that were here tonight, I know the people that are here will realize it, but it's invaluable service. You are responsible for all our health, as far as what water comes out of our tap. And no matter what anybody says, you're the only one that's going to fall responsible for it at the very end, the end of the day. Something's wrong with our water, you're the man that's going to be in trouble. And that is worth a lot of money to me, to make sure. There's not a place that I think that you can go in the North State, too many districts you can go to, turn on the tap and get better water than most places will offer you bottled water. My kids always say, oh, I got bottled water. It's probably better out of the tap, because you really have no idea where that bottled water came from. We at least know where our water came from and what's being done to it. So I'd like to thank George once again for his continued service to the district.
President Corolla, can I make a comment, too, please?
You absolutely can, Director Fleischer.
When I was putting my campaign together, and a lot of these people out here I campaigned, talked to and all this, one of the first stops I made after I threw my hat in the ring was to visit with George. I've always stated that my concern was the health and the future of the district. Well, I got that statement from George, and I give him credit for it. And I truly believe that's his key concern, is the health and future of this district. So I thank you, George.
I'm sorry. Anybody else? Making a comment?
I just, I wish we could pay him what he's worth.
I wish that, too. Once again, I'll thank Director Hunt for all his hard work on this. I know it didn't turn out like you would like, but that doesn't negate any of the work that he did. He did an awful lot of work, and I am certainly personally appreciative of that. The rest of the board should be very, and the public should be very appreciative of the work that he put into this because this was not an easy process at all.
That's what we paying for.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is that what they said about George?
That it equated to about, you know, negative twenty-five cents an hour, so...
Right.
Um, he has put an extreme amount of time into this. And once again, I'd just like to thank you.
Like Larry says, it's my job.
That's, I don't know if it's one that most people want to sign up for, though. So we did, where is it? Treasurer's memo. I think we're, oh, wait, wait, I gotta go to C. I'm sorry. Consider just banning the ad hoc manager contract review committee. I think that we can do that. I would entertain a motion, pretty much.
Do we need to?
Do we need to make a motion, or is it pretty much done?
It's...
I think it's done. But if, if it satisfies the board to have a formal action on it, it's fine, too.
Satisfy the board, or we all consider it to be done?
It's done.
Okay, we don't need, we don't need a motion on that. Okay, treasurer's memo, please.
Okay, we had a budget review last week, so pretty much everybody got a highlight of where we're at. There hasn't been much change from then till now. Just to reiterate, our cash position is at a total of five point eight, six million dollars. Two point two nine of that is restricted. Again, we have eighty-five thousand dollars remaining in our trust from the two thousand nine COP, which is the project fund for the meter replacement project. And that will go against the principal portion of the bonds that we were issued originally to purchase those, that metering system. That five point seven six, that is included, that's the portion, like Director Fleischer mentioned, that we borrowed over the amount of the project. There's, that portion of the, over the amount of the project is sitting in that trust fund, that's restricted. That will be our last payment on that bond. And then the one point six, uh, six million dollars of capacity fees, those are fees that were collected over time for people connecting to the system. Those are earmarked for the water recycle project that we are being mandated by the state to do something with our recycled water. Therefore, we must do a project, and the project is going to be funded, uh, portion, a portion, it's going to be funded by those. And the remaining portion will have to come out of some other fund, meaning either our reserves or debt, uh, debt or a rate increase, so. So back onto item two, our debt service. We've paid almost a million dollars of debt service this year, and our outstanding debt is twelve point seven nine million. From an operational standpoint, we're right on budget. I think I reiterated that during our budget review. From operational revenue and operational expenses, we're right online. The highlights for the fiscal year is, obviously, you see the big corporation yard up there. Our meter replacement project is complete and is up and running and is working very, very well. Our water rights application is in progress. It continues to, we continue to work on that, and George gave a good update on that last time. The process water recycle project, like I just said, that's going to be, it's in the design phase. As soon as the design phase is done, then we'll probably start construction, maybe a year after that. I don't know exactly how long that would take. But we have, we have a couple of years to get it done before we are, are running out of our permit that, that's requiring us to do that. Billy and Skyway pipeline projects, the Billy Road services are almost complete, and so our crews are going to start probably on the Skyway services here shortly. Our accounting software, we actually have somebody on site this week who's going over all of our processes, looking at how we're doing things. It's basically, it's kind of like a business review. He's looking at how we're doing it, how it's going to go into the new system, and then maybe making suggestions on how to do more things more efficiently. Or if we're doing some way that the system can't handle it, how we're going to handle that. So right now, he's, he's on site from Tuesday till Friday, so. And then the A tank is, is in progress. Just want to reiterate that we did get a, our rating was confirmed with standards and pores. We do have a new office and customer service manager on, on board, and she's working with Wendy currently to transition the position. And she is doing an excellent job. We are...
Enter Jack. More kudos to Wendy, who's been an outstanding employee for many years. One more step is a positive. She agreed to extend her retirement date to have adequate crossover with her residence.
Very nice.
Are we going to recognize her with anything special? Because she would...
We had a proclamation.
We did.
Yeah, we did, you guys did a resolution.
Resolution.
Is there, is there something else we should do?
We can have one of those potluck dinners where she takes care of all the... Because she does that all the time, so, yeah, it's...
Especially the salad dresser.
We're going to miss her when it comes to one of those things, so.
I think she's going to delegate that over pretty good.
We're trying to match her wishes, put it that way.
She doesn't want a party in, in regular season.
Okay, that fits her.
We're creating an RFP for outsourcing billing and, and mailing. This is something that we're looking into in the future, and it'll be brought to the board, probably in a budget process, to see what the benefits are for outsourcing the billing and, and going to maybe a full-page bill, but also outsourcing the mailing. And then the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget, we're gathering information already. So that will be coming down the pipeline, and we'll be getting a finance committee probably pulled together to see what kind of wishes they're looking for this year, and we'll go from there. and we'll go from there. So at this time, I'll answer any questions. If not...
I asked you about ATM. We had the one thing, and you said you'd break it down to where it actually went.
Say that one more time.
The ATM or credit card? We had a seb...
Debit card?
Debit card. We had a $75,000 or something thing, and you said you'd break it down?
Yeah, and I... I thought I answered that question about the Tri-Counties Bank card that was on the last one, that it got squished together. So if you would've looked at your last one, there was an ICMA... Two ICMA charges and then a Tri-Counties Bank charge for the one, uh, it was... The Tri-Counties was a $1,077, and the two ICMA's were about the $20,000. And if you remember, the ICMA is our retirement plan contribution. So when the data dumped in, it just used the Tri-Counties Bank as the description.
Align.
But it lumped the three together. So it looked like the Tri-Counties Bank card was $20,000. Well, that wasn't the case, because if we looked at the detail, it was the... It was broken down that way.
Okay. That's what I was after, an explanation of... Thank you.
So if there's any other questions, I can answer them.
I move we accept the treasurer's memo. As presented.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, status five-zero. And then, uh, monthly checks. I will have Director Duncan start off.
Uh-oh. Okay. Page 114, iPad number page one. Workman's comp. You had a good... It's 32,000. You had good news for us, so...
Yeah, that's our... Yeah, 32,000 is our quarterly payment.
And we're gonna get over half, double that back, huh?
Well, that... Remember, that's a combination of workers' comp, property and liability.
Oh, okay. Right.
Yeah, auto liabilities included in that, in the liability insurance.
Okay. Page, uh... Page number three, BCSDA. With seven people?
That was the dinner?
Yeah, I know.
That was seven meals that we had purchased. And so if I remember... Uh, Buchanan Special.
Do we get it back?
Fifth?
That was...
I didn't go, but I'm sure it was February 5th.
Seventh.
Was that the one at Georgia Casino?
No.
No. No, that one was, uh...
It's the place, the Hofbrot.
Yeah, the Hofbrot.
I think Georgiana made the... Did you make the arrangements for the Buchanan Special Districts?
I wanna say it was a Tuesday.
Yes, we had...
I was sick, and I couldn't go.
A board member and spouse that, um, did not go. So the district... The money had already been paid to the restaurant, so we were told that we could not receive a refund.
So we're not gonna get a refund?
But that they could put it on their board agenda for their annual meeting to consider.
So just to be transparent, Mr. Kellogg, uh... Signed up for him and his wife, and he did not attend. The district paid for on his behalf, and we have not received payment yet.
No, I... I told, um... I was sick, and I got really sick. I couldn't go anywhere. At any rate, I said... She said there might be a refund in April. And I said, "Well, that's fine. Just don't charge me any interest," which means I'll pay for it, but it'd be in April. So any rate...
And he had his two choices, a refund or give... Let someone else go.
A what?
A refund or let someone else go. But that was the day of the dinner, so the...
No, I realized what happened. I tried to the last minute to try to go, and I couldn't go. I was gonna ride over with Doug, and I told him I just couldn't make it. I was too sick, so...
Since we're on the topic, I still don't think it is appropriate that the district pay the money. And we have to wait as a district to see if we get a refund or not. Whether you promised to pay or not, that's my personal opinion.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so you don't... We may get a refund then, well?
Yeah, there's a chance in April.
Okay. Okay, page number five. DataMatic?
DataMatic?
Yeah.
That is our annual service, our maintenance contract on all of our, uh, Fireflies, the automated metering system.
Right. What's the mosaic Firefly?
We purchased, uh, Fireflies from DataMatic for our inventory.
Is that just one, though?
No, that's...
Oh. Okay. I thought, gee, those are expensive.
Forty, that's what I think.
Forty, okay, good.
They're about a hundred bucks.
Okay. Page number seven. Wayne Howell?
Yep. That's... Portion of that is for, um, the server.
The... Is that that server thing?
It's portion, it's not the whole thing.
Portion. And so the eight hard drives?
Yep.
Is for that? Okay, and you did check with our accounting system, and what he's gonna do is we'll run it?
Oh, yeah. 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 The accounting system would be fine. What we... What the problem was, was the phone system.
Oh, the phone system.
So we have... We have made changes to make sure the phone system will work.
Right. Okay. Page 10. I'll let you... Somebody else keep the lawyer.
I have copies of the lawyers' bills, too.
Oh, good. That's what I was gonna ask for.
Okay. MJ, General Engineering.
MJ.
$2,000.
MJ Schalke.
MJ Schalke?
Yeah.
That's likely a refund. No, it's a deposit.
Oh, it's a deposit?
For a project.
Oh, okay. We're depositing with him?
He's deposits. Or a thousand refund.
Oh, it's a refund. Refund of a deposit, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Page, um... Page 12. We got a new outfit in here. It's, uh, P-A-R-A. You spelled Paradise funny. Optometry Group? The vendor was spelled wrong. I thought maybe we were spelling Paradise different. Okay, and then, um, auto... Auto parts.
Previews?
It was an air compressor for a truck. And I remember approving one, but I thought we already got it.
This would not be under the approval of the board.
Oh, it wasn't?
I believe there was an air compressor for the...
The treatment plant, then pump station number two or something?
Something like that. That would be under the approval of the board, but this one would be...
Okay, this... It said truck on it, so I...
Making a truck.
Yeah, that's a truck mounted air compressor.
Jim showed us the one that... The other one we approved was...
Page 13, post... There seems to be an awful lot of postage.
Yes.
More than normal. Are we doing something special?
Those leak letters.
Oh, the what?
Leak letters.
Oh, the leak?
Tell our phone system is...
Oh, the leak letters. Oh, okay. Well, good, but that's solid.
They re...
We fill the meter, but the postage meter is...
But there is... The postage is, uh...
We're using it... We're using it more. We're using up that $3,000 worth of...
Quicker.
Quicker. Okay, that's all I had.
Director Kellogg?
Um, the only thing I wanted to bring attention to the board was, since it's been made comments that I've been spending money outrageously with the attorney. On... On the attorney's thing on page six, the only two billings I can find. December 7th, telephone conference with Bill Kellogg, email with district staff, telephone conference with Kevin Phillips, all 2.8 hours, $658. Since it wasn't itemized, I don't know how much of that was me. Telephone conference with... On the 12/12 telephone conference, George Barber, continue work on ad hoc standing committee letter, email with George Barber, telephone conference with Director Kellogg. I've tried to keep my telephone conferences down to 15 or 20 minutes and because Director Hunt keeps telling me